This conference will now be recorded.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All supervisors present, the form is established. Announcements. Next regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors will take place Tuesday, October 31st through 2023 at 9:00 a.m. Community Center, 3500 Edwater Drive, Cedar, Florida. Please silence or turn off your cell phones. Key upcoming events. Sunland Public Information Session on the Pro's new wastewater treatment plant at 9:00 a.m. On October 3rd, 2023, at the Community Center. MLGT visit, the Cedar Classic Tournament is October 10th and 12th. 10 through the 12th, excuse me, in October 2023. Carrion Cars Golf Event is October 14th. Bike Cap Golf Event is October 24th. The MGA Member-Golf Tournament is October 12th and 13th. The WGA Oktoberfest Tournament is October 18th and 19th. Halloween Trump Court Tree is at the Community Center, October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. And the District Halloween Trick or Treat date will be Saturday, October 28th, from 5:00 to 8:00. Now I'm going to have public comments. Public comments will be limited to three minutes and may not be answered by a supervisor or staff member. However, all public comments will be captured for the record and the general manager will address your issues or concerns after the meeting within 72 hours. Do we have any public comments? You would come up to the microphone, please? State your name, your residence.
Good morning. My name is Dave Gating, reside at 5580 Metains. Okay? And we pay an assessment to be part of the Sunland Public Community. We pay an additional assessment because our property adjoins the golf course, okay? So considering these assessments, I don't understand how people from Tanglewood can play our golf course and pay with the green fees being half what members pay. Or not members, but people of the community.
Residents.
Residents. I just don't, I don't understand that.
Well, Tanglewood is part of Sunland, first off. That is, they are part of all of Sunland Lake, so they are, in essence, they play here. And we provide services to them. Where our sewer and water is from us, our security goes there.
So they, they pay assessments also?
In total, yes. The owners of the, of the, of Tanglewood pay the assessment. It's not individual owners because they don't own the land. So we tax, we assess any taxable traps and they're taxable trap and they are assessed.
It's, but.
But our resident rates are equal, Mike, aren't they not equal to Tanglewood rates?
Okay, I can answer that a little bit. So in general, if a Tanglewood resident walks into the golf club, they're going to pay the same resident rate as any other resident at Sunland Lake. We do run, when Tanglewood has a group, they come in as a, as a group twice a week. They do give a group rate and we do offer in the same time slot, which would be a morning 8:00 a.m. shotgun. If a resident wants to play in that, in that morning 8:00 a.m. slot, at the same time, they are offered the same, the same rate as the group. If that makes sense. But if a resident from anywhere in Sunland Lake, or from Tanglewood, walks up the street at 11:00 o'clock on any given morning, they're going to pay the same resident rate as you or me or anybody else.
Well, Jim Cohen, you know, has a huge group. It wouldn't apply to people that play in his group?
I'm sorry, you said Doug Cohen's not on the way down the group? Correct, so that's a prime time, that's a 1:00 shotgun. So if a Tanglewood person wanted to play in that, they're going to pay the same resident rate as those in that same shotgun.
Any other public comments? Moving on. We have motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, which is amended to the Board of Supervisors regular meeting of August 29th. Golf financials through July 2023. Treasury report, district financials, August 2023.
So move.
Your second.
Yeah, I'll take it.
Follow up.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
President, or, I'm sorry, Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
President Herrick?
Yes.
Now we'll have a message from Scott Durak.
Good morning. Board, staff, residents, Scott Durak, Collins County Commissioner, District 3. Sorry if you missed late, but I attended just about right. Just a couple of things to announce this morning. We, a week ago, we, our board has unanimously passed our upcoming budget, north of $188 million this year with accounting. We also did a 3% reduction in our millage rate. So that means if you have homestead exemption filed on your home, that you will, you will see no tax increase based on what you paid last year. That will raise your property value increase and keep your tax the same as part of your general tax category on your taxable, keep that the same. I was also successful this year in getting another $100,000 put in our capital financial strategy for Schumacher Road improvements. I know that we will certainly be having more discussion on that in the road in front of us. So other than that, I have started a brief conversation with that, that helped with the hospital. They have a couple parcels on their frontage road about a possible location for recycling center. I know we've had a few residents contact me from out here, wondering what the status was at on end. I'm starting some good conversation with the hospital, so cautiously optimistic that maybe we'll be able to work out something with them on the frontage road to have a recycling center that would be real handy for you folks out here.
What happened to the one in Lake Winata that originally you were talking about?
Staff just had some concerns about the space in there and being on the highway right off 27 and traffic turning in and coming out of there, what have you. And I did a search of hospital properties up on the frontage road about two, three weeks ago. And I've talked with the administrator up there and they're willing to sit down and talk with me. See, they've got a couple parcels up there that need work. You know, we have in our contract with our hauler, we have up to five sites, we have three right now. So if we can find a location, then we will make the improvements, fence it in. It will have certain operating hours like the other ones do. And the other locations want to enable parts to be re-landed, so they're fairly well received. They're starting to get more and more use as people get used to them being there and the hours of operation. So other than that, we're going to continue to move forward. I think like everybody else, if one person cooler weather coming, I think this will be here shortly. But I'll certainly entertain any questions, it'll just help.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. Moving along. Discussions on the pending street table for Aduna and San Indicio. And that is section eight. Did I talk about your line? Is that later?
There wasn't an expectation to keep the commissioner here. I mean, he's got a schedule, but we could discuss the slides that are in your packet. So we can get to a consensus, so we can re-engage the commission.
Okay. I mean, we can do it later if you're here.
Deal.
Whatever you want to do, but we should discuss.
Yeah, let's do it now.
Okay, so if you look at your packets, the facts, as the commissioner mentioned, there's some collection of money going on. He gave you the most current or correct numbers there. The county set aside $100,000 last, this year, 2023. They reallocated another $100,000 into 2024 budget. So right now at the county level, there's $200,000. His plan, working with county commissioners, is to get that top of the $325,000 by 2025. That's, that's what he has spoken to me about, mentioned here and other residents. If you watch the last county board meeting, when it came to the budget, there was a very frank and open discussion there, so I appreciated that. But it definitely brought to highlight, we all need to be on the same page here. The expectation of that money right there is truly only for the extension of Schumacher Road from Ortega west. That's it. Not turning right, not coming into Sunland Lake, not a connection, just to push it west. Where west is the discussion. Do we stop at Cortez, do we go further? That money is only a portion and in the county's mind, it's 50%. So the most they will do is offer 50% of that road extension. All the commissioners were on the record saying that last meeting, so I don't think there's any, there's no confusion on their part that if they move forward on a Schumacher extension, they will only pay us a county 50% in their mind right now. 325 has been, it's probably in the 25% range for the extension of that road. So there's a, there's a financial gap right there. The county right now has no intention, and that could change, has no intention right now to do assessments on the southern side of the road, on the county residents. We, we can do assessments on the northern side of the roads, this is for all Sunland Lake residents. And I say assessments, usually when you do new road work, you have, the municipality has some skin in the game on how much they're going to put towards it, but they have the ability to assess individual parcels, a portion, not the entirety, a portion for some of the contribution to that road. We would have the ability to do that with our northern parcels. And if you see there, there's approximately 23 parcels that are in Sunland Lake District that we could, we could assess, based on your vote, we could assess to build a, some funding for this project. If you worst case it, in my opinion, 5,000 is a worst case. That's only about $100,000 that we could add and contribute to this project. And again, that's contributing to Schumacher. Nothing for us. So we have a philosophical issue we have at our level. Is that if we continue to pursue this with the county, we have a large gap in money and the county wants to know what are we willing to contribute? Whatever money, don't worry about the percentage. Whatever money is Sunland Lake willing to bring to the table to forward this discussion for the extension of Schumacher. We, Sunland Lake, we do have a need and a requirement for a southern road coming down via Cortez or another road to go towards Schumacher. We have that requirement. We have a requirement based on safety reasons. We did an assessment with the sheriff and the, and the fire department. 60% of our calls, for emergency calls, could be greatly impacted by having an immediate access on Schumacher. So there's a safety aspect of this that we need to put into play. Right now, they have to come through Sunland Lake Boulevard, they got to come up Ortega, then they got to work their way through little back streets. That's, that's a concern to them. Now, that's also a concern that we could use to throw back at the county commissioners saying, there's a safety issue in the county, you need to address this, that's why you need to extend Schumacher. And that's not our problem, it's your problem. So that's kind of leverage that we could have. We need that road to connect, not really to get access to Schumacher, but for our expansion in the future, for Sunland Lake, as well as our new wastewater plant. We need an access road for construction. We need an access road for, for just the ability to get back to our new wastewater plant, which we will discuss later today, is off of right now Palermo. So the discussion needs to be, if we do our road tied to our wastewater plant and we bring it right up to a Shell Road Schumacher, we can either get an exception to policy of the county that they, a nice street that ends into a Shell Street. They don't usually do that. They usually want you to tie into a railroad street. Or we can force their hand by having them extend Schumacher and then we connect our road and then we're good. Our road is going to cost in the half a million to 600,000 dollar range, just our road. And that's not a county requirement, that's our requirement. So really, we just need to get the consensus from the board here of how far you want me to continue pushing this with the county and the numerics of it, what you're comfortable with on the contribution side.
Well, I, I'll comment first. Goes back a long way and I, I'm surprised that, something must have changed in the county because as close as two months ago, Scott was working on assessing everybody. The rancher on the, on the south side. And it's been my contention the whole time, that if he does that, or if the county does that, we will pay our pursuit because we have 20 lots, so on and so forth. And, and I can go back to where it started because they said they want us to pay 50% of it because we want it. We have never said we want that. Now, you, it sounds to me like you're saying we want it now, but I can go back to.
We did say we want it.
Not, not eight years ago when it first come up. You know, and so now I'm saying if we need it, then, then they have a reason to take that. Do it, but this is something new.
I don't think they were saying that they won't assess everybody on that road.
No, they're not, he just said, that's what he's not going to touch.
Their concern from the county perspective and we'll get it in writing from our county administrator when I meet her next week, I will ask her to put in writing. They're concerned that the assessments to the southern side would not be beneficial because there's really only three lots. Now remember, past Ortega to the left, there's two big cars, that's it. So all they can do is assess those two people. And it's not assessed based on the size of the parcels, it's an assess based on their contribution to the road. So like with us, our recommendation would be every 20, the 23 parcels, $5,000 each provides X amount of money. They would do the same formula to the south, maybe not the 5,000, but they would do the same formula to the south.
Well, I would, just to make it short, I'd be in favor of assessing the 23 lots, $5,000. We have $115,000 in it. But to spend a million dollars, close to that, just to get the road down to where we want it. I, I, we can't, we can't do that because we got to pay for a road to get to our, to our wastewater plant that we should pay for. I have no qualms with that, but it, it's just, that's a county road. It's the county responsibility to put that road there. So if we don't do anything, they're going to have to probably wipe Sunland Lake Boulevard, which is not ours. I mean. You know, but that's not our problem. We're, we're trying to get involved in county stuff, that's a county road. That's nothing Sunland Lake does.
Because of the safety issue, is there any, would there be any grant money out there to assist us in this?
That is exactly the discussion we're having next week with the county administrator. Because we now have a safety dynamic to this that's never been really proved. I mean, I had the sheriff come on record with showing documents where the actual incidents are and they did an analysis. So this is the first time that that's going to be presented to the county to include the mission. He wasn't involved in this discussion. So I think by presenting that data to them, they, they tick up higher on their interest level, but also they'll open up some money from our state partners, possibly federal money, to do that. And we have a meeting at 12:30 today, 1:30 today with the state senator on this topic. We're starting to go down the road to get, find out who can help us. Not really help us, help the county and help us.
Well, I, I personally want to continue to read the paperwork. My opinion is we have to have another entrance down at that end. With the amount of building that's going down at that end, plus with the waste street and planning out there, I think it's an absolute must that we continue to go down this road. Schumacher is the county's responsibility, right? How much will it cost us to extend whichever road we're going to choose to Schumacher? Do we know that? Do we have any idea about?
We're, we're tying it to the wastewater extensions, right now it's a half a million, $2 million to do our.
To do what we need to do to get to Schumacher. So have we told the county that we're going to spend $32 million on the car? Half a million dollars to get to, to get to Schumacher and you can take the $300,000 and stick it?
No, we can't.
Personally, I think we're spending a considerably larger amount of money than we're asking the county to spend. We pay taxes. I, I just don't see how that's fair. Have we presented the case in a much, much more positive way than I'm suggesting?
Sure.
To the county? Saying it's going to cost Sunland Lake X?
We will, we are, we will present that because we're working on that on our part. What I, what I was really trying to get is some part of consensus is that if there's any contribution from Sunland Lake on Schumacher, the only recommendation with staff perspective is the 23 parcels that are on Schumacher that would have invested interest in accessing Schumacher. And that would be, quote, since we control the assessments, that would be our contribution.
I'm thinking assessing, knowing what we're going to talk about later, to do another assessment of $5,000 on 23 parcels is, is not really a good idea. Because we're going to assess everybody that built it.
I just wanted to say too that the county's got $188 million budget.
Yes, they do.
And we've got a $15.5 million budget. They have collected over $8 million in lot sales in Sunland. And the tax rate here is extremely good for the county. I, I don't understand. Of course, it's, Florida's different than where I originally come from, but that's not how you attack growth in the community. It is ask us for.
The tax revenue base, the tax revenue for 2023 is going to pay for over 25% of the yearly budget. I think, I really believe that we are an entity that deserves more attention than what we're getting.
I agree, it's, it is.
By far.
It just frustrates me because.
With the Monah Building that we've done here since 2019 to 2023, they are receiving $7 million more dollars a year of tax revenue from Sunland Lake.
Plus the sale of lots, right?
Plus the sale of lots.
Plus the sale of lots.
That's just from 2019 to 2023. We've got a bunch of them out there that are being built right now. We've got, what, 50, 60 houses that are in works right now?
I count it, yeah, a hundred in, in under construction in Sunland.
So I think the consensus is take my approach in a positive way.
There you go. That's all. In negotiation, I need to know what my parameters are, can you just give me my parameters? I will go to town on my county friends, don't worry about it.
You could keep talking to them, right? You know, and I'm only one vote for a couple more, or a couple more months, but it's just not, it's not fair. We have been a good partner, I think, for the last eight years that I've been on the board meeting. It's just, there's no other way to say it, it's out there.
I understand, it's a one-way partnership.
Yes.
I have my marching orders, thank you.
Thank you. But you know, in our own mind, we still have to decide which way we're going, right? We haven't decided that yet.
That'll be in our wastewater discussion.
Oh, that's remarkable. Okay. Excuse me. Okay, agenda, on the action agenda, item A is the discussion on the pending street tables. Mr. Foster, do you have that?
Yes, sir, so you have in front of you the, the two staff recommendations after we did the speed machine test for San Ignacio and Oruna. The product that you're looking at or should be looking at here is the San Ignacio. So we did the assessment. We are showing it on the map where the machine was placed out. Based on the feedback on the machine, over 4,000 cars, less than 5% were doing it above the speed limit. So in our assessment, from where we did the, the speed machine, speeding was not in excess of any state, federal standards, or even our standards of above the posted speed limit. Now that said, I have our security guys going to move that machine. San Ignacio is a nice big lawn cul-de-sac or passerby. We're going to do a couple assessments around that circle in the next few weeks to make sure that's a, that's a constant, less than 5% across the San Ignacio. Right now, staff recommendation is it does not meet the criteria, there's one existing speed bump and if we, to, to put a speed bump in there would not be justified with the numbers that we selected for San Ignacio. So we're recommending no replacement of a speed bump on the Ignacio. You want to move to the next one or?
Let's do one at a time. Great, okay. I don't care, I mean, I'm fine with it, you know. Yeah, but I think we should, I should. Okay, but any more discussion?
What would be that?
Any public discussion? Not on the speed bump or San Indicio, we're saying right now, proposal is that it is not required, but I need.
I have a question. On that chart, I was trying to read it wrong, it said less than 5% over 25 miles an hour. Two lines above that, both say over 5% about 25 miles. It's 344 cars of the 4,000 cars were trapped at a number of, about 25%.
So what, there's an 8.6%? That's 8% of 4200, so I agree, correct. That's what it should be.
Yes, yes. So am I wrong or is something wrong about that graph? I think the graphics are on, I, we know it's less than 5%. I apologize on that, I'm looking at what we're saying now, yeah. Give me a second. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
It is, in totality, only 344 cars were above 25 miles an hour. I apologize for those percentages, got to figure out what happened there.
We still got a public. Hold on a second. About 600 cars. It's 15%, it's still 8%. 344? 344, 4191, 8.2%. Uh, let's, since you're getting more.
We're getting more data.
We're getting more data, all right. I'm going to motion to table, interpret the San Ignacio. So move. I've been saying, don't put this location down. Well, if there's more data coming, the graphics are something they call, because it's 8%. If there's 344 cars of the 4191, it's 8%. Now, is 8% sufficient enough to constitute a speed bump? I mean, I don't think so.
But we'll, we'll get more, we'll get two more reads and we'll bring this deal off.
All right. So okay, the table, motion to table.
I did.
Second.
Second.
Follow up.
Supervisor Brooks?
Sure.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
And President Herrick?
Yes. Of course, okay, on our Aduna oriented.
We're doing it in the next slide. We did one shot, it's a, it's a straight shot over Aduna. So, and it's a little bit lengthy, but 1500 feet. But just out of that one shot, there was a large amount of cars over 25 miles per hour. And I'm, I'm seeing now, there's a range that was left off the chart. It gives you 25 to 30, 35 to 40, and that's where the percentages are wrong. So that's what, that's what's at the spot here. Irregardless, oh, close to 3,000 cars, almost half was above the supposed speed limit. So it's definitely an issue on Aduna. There are no speed limits right now, or speed bumps on Aduna. So in the way the state and the federal DOT rules are, speed table or bump is only good for about 300 to 500 foot above the segment. So to stick one in there, while it may greatly improve the speed reduction. So to stick one in there, while it may greatly improve the speed reduction that can run in front of those people for three hundred feet, it does nothing for the street. You want to reduce the speed on the entirety of the street or Oruna, based on the DOT rules, we would have to place three speed tables or four bumps based on those little rough locations there, which would force the gradual increase and decrease of an individual car's speed to address a speed bump, and then if they wanted to speed up again, they would have to slow down. So three speed bumps is about a five thousand dollar cost for us to install them. The average is about fifteen hundred dollars each. To address, properly address the Oruna speed issue, we would, as staff recommend, three speed tables or bumps at that one Oruna, and it will come out of its standing budget for our roads department. This highlighted an issue that we do not have a segmented budget for speed tables. So I will have to bring back some to the board for addressing that in the future. We basically take it out of the road maintenance. But staff recommendation here, we do need, to be effective, three speed tables on Oruna.
How far apart are they? Five hundred feet?
In a five hundred foot gap, you reduce the mileage by five miles per.
So how far apart are these?
These will be three, three fifty in park.
Three hundred and fifty feet?
Yes.
Like a football field.
Yes, that brings it to the, that brings it back to speed limit.
Yes, sir. Is there speed bumps that you need to purchase that you can drive with the speed limit at four twenty to twenty-five instead of the jar breakers that will be passed now? They're supposed to slow down to fifteen miles an hour if you go.
Sure.
Even at fifteen miles an hour, they are quite abrupt.
We would have to trans, we would have to migrate to more of a speed table, which has about a ten-foot wide product that has a slower ingress, egress. Lot more expensive, but that would be more acceptable to driving. It would force you to slow down, but it's not going to hammer your car with this bump. We don't have those in inventory. We have to go buy some.
Are there any stop signs over there? I don't remember. I don't know.
No. No, no.
So it's clear shot?
It's clear shot. That's the part of the problem.
It is. But personally, I think a bump every hundred, every football field is an open door. I mean, that's what you're talking about, a hundred yards between the bumps. I would do two, and then prove me wrong. That's just my opinion.
We could do one. But the state DOT standard is that for the length of that street, they would put in three if I called the DOT right now and said, give me speed bumps.
I understand that, but I'm thinking about the people who have complained, saying, I can't see what you guys did. You didn't have a hundred yards.
It's how long of a period is this test for? We do a week, the machine out there. I'm surprised about the bowling, just personally, there's a lot of corners.
Oh, yeah? Well, that's amazing for the Sunnolake.
Exactly.
That's exactly what's happening, and that's just going to grow. How much is this speed bill?
Oh, that'd be more in the seven to eight, eight thousand range per test. We can still install them, and that's because we're buying non-permanents. If you wanted us to go down the route of an actual asphalt, we install it, then we don't, we basically remove our ability to move these over time if we need to. We could be cheaper by doing it ourselves and just laying some asphalt in as a speed table. But they're not removed.
Any further board discussion?
Well, I think we need at least two, take out the middle one.
Any further board discussion? I agree with you. Any public comment? It sounded like I would need a motion to put in two speed bumps on Oruna.
I'll make that vote.
I'll second. Call the vote.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Herrick?
Yes.
I would replace them so that if necessary, if we need a third one, it's not going to involve.
We got it.
Item, item B, Columbus Road Swell, the RFP discussions and the motion. Want to go ahead and take this?
Yes, sir. So you have, you packed up the map. It shows you the four locations. This was tied to the hurricane damage from last year. We finally got the RFP back, two bidders. We talked about this, we all tabled it last month because we didn't have a firm. We had some questions for our two bidders. Questions were answered to our satisfaction. I included the table that we assessed all our bids. This is actually in the product when they submit, so this is nothing new to these bidders. They know that we're going to do some analysis of the product they submit to us. So you see the ranking and evaluation. Basically, it came out to, as to the bidders, an equal amount of points based on our assessment, fourteen fourteen. In that scenario, we'd go with, see, the lowest bidder. In this case, there's a two hundred thousand dollar difference, so that's a hard thing to pick the higher bidder. The recommendation from the staff after answering all our concerns and questions from last month is the Clyde Johnson Company to do this project. They could start in a thirty-day window, and their, and part of their bid was a no more than three-month completion of the project, more likely sooner. But we're recommending you vote on Clyde Johnson as we give this bid awards.
Board discussion?
What was the connection with Clyde Johnson and Sunnolake again?
They have some subcontractors that are actual residents. It wasn't Clyde Johnson Company, but they have a major subcontractor physically that lives here. That's all.
And I guess we'll have to do a budget adjustment for the eighty-five thousand, and we have to cover our own?
This is going, this was actually forecasted in 2023 money. I'll be bringing you how we're going to roll that over because the FEMA is going to reimburse the percentage back, but we will have to have a budget amendment to show where the money is.
But we didn't forecast the eighty-five thousand?
Forecasted it actually, the larger one, for the entirety. We didn't know the FEMA contribution at that point.
But this is not being a money, this is all money.
Yes, sir. We have to pay upfront, and then FEMA does it.
But you're eighty-five thousand short. According to what you said, they don't pay the whole thing. They're one day, anything, whatever the percentage is, so we have to pull up the eighty-five thousand on our own approximately.
Check. That's our.
So we have to do a budget adjustment for that eighty-five?
You'll be showing a budget adjustment.
Okay.
That's a rollover for the suggestion.
Any public comment on the repairs Columbus and Swell? I got Nelson, maybe they can just get this machine together next thirty days, thirty days to start it.
They'll start with the thirty days, and then the window time in the three-month project.
Three months.
But it takes, it's going to be a lot sooner because the swale works quick. The largest project is, thirty-day project is Columbus.
Okay, any motions to approve Clyde Johnson instructions?
One.
Second. Call the vote.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
President Herrick?
Yes.
Okay, I can see it's a discussion on the procedure to adjust the county ordinance impacting Sunnolake on a variety of administrative factions. And so, Mr. Bossler? And David, you want to take that over?
Yeah, and they will talk to specifics. This has been the ongoing discussion that there's some administrative stuff that the county needs to address. We lumped the discussion with the landowners' adjustment as well as the administrative changes that we're asking for the county. The product in your packet is what the county requires us in the format. They have some days going to cover. What we are going to do at par level to show our resolve and this is a resolution that lumps everything together, you all vote on it, you approve it, and then when it goes to the county board, they see it's a, it's a well-needed change on a variable that they are supporting with the resolution for their action. I cannot speak to their timeline, and maybe a thirty to sixty-day window for them. It's on their agendas and their schedules, but we want to get this to them as soon as you all vote positive or negative, so they can get action at one point. I'll turn it to David.
So you'll see. Soon, you'll see there on the first page of the H, that's the statement of legislative intent. That's the new thing that the county started requiring. It basically spells out what we're asking for. Then there's the, the second page is that timeline about how if we want to go through the process of trying to change the landowner voting procedure to do away with the landowner election, but the rest, then the next page is the resolution, changes are highlighted in red. This includes a stuff on the garbage cans, and also the main change that we're doing here is we're doing away with proxies for the landowner meeting, and we're going to go into an absentee ballot system. So the people, people that can't attend a landowner meeting will be able to vote, but only the people. Instead of passing your ability to vote to somebody else, you're just, you're just, you're voting early, but through an absentee ballot process. That's the, that's the main change that we're requesting of the county. Other than that, the Georgia stuff is also something we've talked about in the past to clear up the code enforcement issues.
Board discussion?
I do have a question. Are we prepared that if the county doesn't get to this in a timely manner, what we're going to do?
Yeah, well, I mean, the rules, this changes the rules, so if this change doesn't go into effect in time for next year's landowner, you know, election.
Well, that's probably a few months away. I mean, the preparation and the way we're going to run the election will be totally different if the county does not get to this.
That's correct.
So are we prepared to deal with that?
I believe so.
So what are we going to do?
I think we've already contacted the. And we.
So we go back to the old proxies and have a new pair?
Yeah, it's not going back to. That's what we're still using.
Oh, we're still using the old?
Yeah, that's still the system in place.
It's a shame that it's taken us two years and we still don't know if we can do this.
Well, hopefully, like I say, this, all the work's been done. Basically, all that the county really has to do is either rubber stamp and say, yes, we agree and we can do this, or else no. So hopefully, it's not going to be a long drawn.
It's that way three months ago, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Five months ago. Seven months ago.
Yeah, I have my.
It's a shame that it took this long.
I'll make this more.
Hold on. I'll be done. I'll take that. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Call the vote.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks?
Yes.
Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
President Herrick?
Yes.
I just remembered, I did have one question. I know we've asked him that once. Do we know how much we're going to hold these people responsible for in their violations? It doesn't really stipulate it here. It just says we're going to hold them accountable.
We haven't changed those numbers, a hundred dollars for the first one.
That's not really.
That's the same. We haven't.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. The next item D is a fresh hand up.
Would be nice if.
Infomark is up for margin. Here it is.
So Infomark?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah. Infomark is for citizens. This is our outside accounting agency that's been working for the district for over a year now. We came up with them, renegotiated the contract, refined what I need them to do, and right now, it's very focused on the accounting side of it. So in the adjustment, you see the contract proposed back to us. We just got this fresh yesterday after the lawyers all looked at. We went with a much reduced contract. It went from a hundred and twenty, a hundred and eighteen thousand a year to the number there, seventy-five thousand a year. And we added an out for us that in every, every six-month window, we can assess the need to continue. The reality right now is that we have started the training in-house with some of our finance department. We do not have a CPA on staff, so the reality is for the seventy-five thousand dollars and for what they provide right now, it justifies that, that cost for using a contractor because they dedicate a account to us, an accounts payable department to us, and one additional helper external to us. Until we can build those systems in-house with talking to finance director, we foresee in the next twelve months, we will be able to. Until we can do that, and I can't cut ties from Infomark, I would highly discourage us from cutting ties from Infomark. We saved a lot of money here, so that's good, but I, they know we're on the radar that their time clock is ticking. And we are now, we'll hold them accountable to, accountable to the quality of products, the convenience of the products, but that's all they're focused on is products, the finance products. They're not doing anything with our minutes anymore, our budget, I don't need them involved in that whatsoever. So highly recommend we approve this, and every six months, we will review at a staff level, and I'll bring back to you when we think it's time to cut the ties.
Sounds very good. Any more comment?
So we're going to hire an accountant?
Well, no. So right now, that's the missing piece on our staff that we do not physically have.
Right.
That if we, until we hired one, we'd be the closest I'd be able to say we do not need Infomark. So we may just accept that the Infomark is a necessary evil, pardon the expression, because they're our capital. They've got the qualifications and certifications, and they're good, and we're only paying seventy-five thousand dollars a year. I could not hire an accountant who pays benefits for that amount.
So when do we plan on hiring an accountant?
We don't, let's say, that's the missing piece. So until we get to that point, and I say, if we hire it, we can start apples-to-apples discussion. If I hire an accountant, we keep everything in-house, it's going to cost this. If we keep Infomark, it's costing this. You guys tell me what you want to do. We're not in that discussion right now.
But a CPA, CPA, the hire of CPA would cost us more than seventy-five thousand.
Yes.
But is it the right thing to do?
If we want to keep everything in-house, it is, but again, there's a cost to that, and the only, the feedback I need to provide to you in the next six to twelve months is, is Infomark providing quality products in a timely manner? I'll use an example. It takes them three weeks to get us a treasurer's report. I should be able to walk into Coral's office, say, hit the print button, get your treasurer's report right now. I can't do that. That's a problem with having an outside agency. So if, until we get to that point and we can give you the cost of that, I highly recommend we keep Infomark for a period of time.
I'm not against keeping Infomark for six months. I mean, don't get me wrong, but what I can't figure out is what's stopping us from starting the process of replacing them? And you're saying we're not going to do it until we hire one? So my question is, when are we going to hire one?
We are starting the process. We're training in-house folks. We're adjusting some of our duties and responsibilities for the people we have in-house to eliminate some of the things Infomark is coming for us.
Right.
The linchpin here is we do not have a CPA.
Right. I understand.
So once I get all the other stuff set, and all I have left is a CPA, I will bring that cost to you, and then we can have discussions at time to cut Infomark.
So you're saying it's too early to hire a CPA?
That's, that's, that's the next issue. That's the only way to get rid of one, have a CPA on staff.
But it's too early to hire one? Or to go look for one?
It, it is too early right now, but within six months, it probably could be.
I, if we can keep Infomark and keep giving the product, why would we hire a CPA? That's a, that's a big amount of money. That's a large amount of money.
Because we should be in-house. We were once upon a time in-house. Now we're all of a sudden where we went out of house because we ran out of people. Now it's time to bring it back and be an in-house operation.
But if, but if we could get a quality product on a timely basis for seventy-five thousand?
It's been two years and we haven't been able to.
They're getting much further focus than they were before.
We have, we have a different team now.
I'm sorry? They hadn't better focus than they were before. They weren't letting them run themselves and they weren't doing anything.
Right.
Right. They weren't, they weren't doing it in the us, we're gonna provide them. Once upon a time, with the same amount of people that we currently have, we ran this operation in-house.
And once upon a time, we were just, uh, three hundred residents and
I'm talking two years ago. We ran an operation in-house with the same amount of people that we have now. Now you're telling me we can't do it? Not saying we can't do it, we're saying there's a cost to doing it. And if it's, if the discussion can take place, but if it's cost, if it's cost effective at seventy-five thousand, then like, why go pay a hundred and fifty thousand? For the same reason that you paid his seller. You get the right person for the right job, it's the right thing to do. But if, what would you? I, I, okay, but if you, if you're getting the right product for seventy-five thousand, then why pay a hundred and fifty? You're depending on an outside company. But if We just have to, yeah, different opinions on the way of running the operation. I think in-house was kind of the way to go. And I think we're bringing more and more of it in. Well, but I see how they do it, but so far, they haven't been able to do what he wants. I agree. And if they don't, I'm sure he's gonna come back in six months and say, well, they're gone. I said I was okay with doing it for six months. Probably, we have more people.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve this, please.
Hold it, hold it. I hope they're done with it.
Okay, the public comment.
Any public comment on the retaining of Infomark for six months at a seventy-five dollars and six hundred and sixty-eight dollars? Now I'll take the motion.
I make a motion that we approve the new contract. How do you think, Mark?
Call the vote.
Supervisor Phillips?
Yes.
Supervisor Brooks? No. Supervisor Gilpin?
Yes.
Supervisor Norton?
Yes.
President Hare?
Yes.
Okay. IFT is the discussion on the wastewater treatment plant way ahead. So with that, you're on board.
Yes, sir. All right. So the wastewater treatment plant, we've been in discussion here for many, many, many years. We're just trying to get to this thing to the finish line, or at least how it all started. So we can start pushing some dirt. Uh, which I have in your packet is the backstory for our citizens as well, if you'd all refresh our memory. We are in discussion right now to replace our existing two wastewater plants. The state has received a lot of money from the federal infrastructure bill. They're going to do that money down very quickly. And the concern we get from our DEP friends, that's why we're trying to reach out to some of our state legislators and representatives to ride their support on this is that the days of getting like a Lake Placid, a fifty million dollar grant in their opinion are gone. We've missed that, we've missed that opportunity. That said, with the right power behind us, the right emphasis behind us, we might be able to get back to the large buckets of money to, to, to do a, a total plant rebuild with nothing out of our pocket. Right now, we are, it is not a capacity issue, it's a date of service of the equipment issue. So the capacity you see in there, we're less than, we're at twenty-five percent of our northern plant, unit four. We're at seventy-five percent capacity down to the south. Uh, total capacity is the problem is that we are, we're gonna get to a point based on the distance the, the waste has to travel, that the capacity of our plants will be exceeded. The one that, the one that impacts the most, the southern plant, unit twenty-three, that'll get to max capacity relatively quick. And that is the, uh, the plant that is in need of major renovations. And to throw money and to redo both of those plants uh, would just not get the lifespan out of it for the money that we put into it. So the recommendation that we have provided a packet to DEP on was, was basically four quarters of action. Uh, fix the plants as they are, fix them with some increased capacity. Uh, fix them with some increased capacity on-site, but also off-site. Meaning find a place out west where we can have ponds, sit the ponds out there because we don't have the growth like plant two, four and twenty-three. And connect it all together, or just bite the bullet and build an entire new facility out west, wherever out west. And have the ponds on-site and everything there out of sight, out of mind. That will be in a place that it could feed the entirety of our network. Those are the four recommendations that we are working with our DEP partners on. We're in the back and forth right now with answering questions. One of these questions is that we are required to have a public comment session next week. We'll do that. Uh, to get that on the record, we have to have one more before the end. We'll feed all that data back to DEP and then they will make the determination relatively quick. Every three months, they make a vote. So if we get this to them in the, in this next couple, you know, thirty day window, then we should get an answer from them before the end of the year of, do they approve it and how much they approve? That will help set the motion for the rest of the financing plan. As you see there, the concern we have is that all the money right now that DEP would give us is truly just for a plug and play system, either on-site or at a new site. The wastewater system is a network. It's the plant, but then it's all the connected pipes, pump stations and so on. There is limited funding for all the ancillary stuff, the connections. They just fund the big part of the plant. So working with DEP, we're trying to get the money to get us a new or a fixed plant. We are now identifying with our engineers the connection mechanism and the need to reverse all our pump stations. Because if you don't know Sunlake, we have a, a, a gradient drop that goes from the north side twenty-seven, we're on high ground, and it dips down to the south. So for us, it's a good thing for waste. As they say, crap flows downhill. Got it? So that's good. So we can, we, we just gotta reverse our, our motors at our pump stations, just send it back that way. It's a lot easier than So that's good. Problem we'll run into is that where, depending on where we place our new plant, the stuff to the west of that, we're just gonna be pumping back. But that's fine, we, we can address that with pump stations and list stations and so on. We are now working on the connection stuff. The, the large twelve inch main, we would have to put down Cortez. A large twelve inch main, we would have to continue out Sunlake, whole part, all the way to Balboa. That network needs to be established with a new wastewater plant. As Sunlake builds out over time, people will tap into those lines and then it all feeds to our new wastewater plant. So the discussion we need right now is we need to get feedback from the state of what level they're willing to fund. At the low end is twenty-five million, at the high end is fifty million. Fix a plant, give us a new plant. Our data that we've provided to them is very supportive, but we need a tired new plant. They see it, the location, the, the environmental impacts, everything is in our favor. And our consultant, that, uh, the Florida Water Commission, they've all supported us. What I'm trying to add to the pot is more support from legislators and whatnot to say, hope's on Lakeview. And that would mean, that means something in the bureaucratic world. You all don't understand that. So once we get those supporting documents, we'll get this to DEP. I'm, I'm thinking we're gonna get closer to the fifty million per new plant. What we owe you now is the, the cost that we need to do to set the stage for, for success here for that. So here's the map of what we're talking about. Unit four will not go away. Unit four is our low pressure system. So our low pressure system is, think of it as a septic system. All the people north of Sunlake, and I say all, a large percentage, north of Sunlake are on what we call low pressure systems. So you all have a type of interconnecting holding tank that has a small pump that pushes the waste into our network. And then it flows to our wastewater unit four. If you're on the south side of, of Sunlake, you're in a gravity system. There's no pumps involved at any level. It just flows out of your ass, goes into the network, flows to the wastewater plant. So a lot easier to connect into those. And it definitely a lot easier for us to turn gravity the other way when it goes down to the south. So that's the network in place, but we will continue unit four. First, based on the, the, the quality of unit four is a higher quality. We gotta find them twenty years out of unit four. The, uh, the necessity for low, uh, low flow systems going to unit four is there. And the ability to one day turn over a unit four to purely the hospital is in our favor. We could actually sell them unit four, they have a dedicated wastewater plant. That's something they like, that's something they want, that's something they, they want their own systems that they control. And that starts a far further discussion, but based on the location unit four and the, the connection to the hospital, we have the ability that once we get a new plant and tie everybody in, it can all go to the new plant and we have the ability to basically have an asset of unit four, what we want to do. Keep it, use it, or divest ourselves of it to another entity. So that's a different discussion. As you see in the grayed out area, the area is right now unserviced by any wastewater plant. So this was tied to our argument that we need a new one. You see the proposed areas, the south side down there along Schumacher, along unit seven, unit, unit six, uh, out in the back, in the back forty there. Uh, that would be the location, that's the best spot when it comes to what we not only own the parcels and majority of them, but the location is the best pot that we've identified. And it basically can feed all the potential growth of Sunlake over time with very little connectivity. All the other network can easily tap into it and then that can, that can address proposed new growth. The concept of moving forward is that we would do some public sessions. We get the packet approved, we get our responses back, we get the money set aside uh, for the project itself. That will come relatively quick once they approve it at their level. What needs to happen in twenty twenty-four timeframe, no later than twenty twenty-five timeframe, is that we need to start working on the, the network and the infrastructure. If you look at your packet earlier on, there's a slide provided of all the parcels tied to the Schumacher discussion. All the parcels where the new plant would go. Again, this is one of these things, because we kicked the can down the road a few times too long, we lost some, we lost some leverage. So a lot of those parcels have been sold. So now we're in a position of Sunlake that I need to go back in there and re-acquire parcels. That's gonna be my challenge, work with y'all. But there's probably about fifteen, twenty parcels that have been voided by people. There's no utilities there. They're only worth about a thousand bucks. But we could have a discussion that, hey, by the way, we got a parcel up here, we'll swap with you, just do a one-on-one. You take that one, I need this one. But that, that's a problem we gotta address because we need to own that whole collective of parcels. So that's one challenge we need to do.
You're talking about the potential?
Or the new spot, yes.
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 You're putting that in their back car, I would think.
Yeah, exactly. That is a selling point, yes. So, uh, so we wanna start doing that. We need to acquire the collective entity of where we wanna put these, this wastewater plant. We also wanna start setting the conditions back there. There's not a lot of, uh, of, of water issues, right? When I say water issues, uh, swamp stuff, that area, more sandy, more, more surface sand down there. But we wanna start putting some energy down there with some clay clearing and start setting the perimeter. Start, start doing some work at our cost, at our level. So we can start getting the, uh, the bids in there to get the contractors to start getting some numbers set. And then there's the, the whole network of pump stations and whatnot, we need to start, uh, reconfiguring them. That's this quick matter of just switching pumps around for adding pipes. I talk Cortez, I talk Schumacher, Sunlake. So those are the things that we have to happen in twenty twenty-four. We're not gonna have any federal money from state money, I should say, in twenty twenty-four. We may, it'd be great. But if we don't, we need to have a, a fund source to do that, okay? Uh, we need to now do the external connections, all that type of stuff. And again, that's not gonna be tied to the grant. So all that is out of our own pot. Where we're gonna get that money from. And then at the soonest, I can see us pushing dirt when it comes to the plan, is the twenty twenty-seven timeframe. That'll give us in the twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five, figure out the plan, get the concept, get the land, start prepping. And then we bid it. Right now, Lake Placid is having to go to three contractors because no one's big enough in, in, right now, they're busy. No one's big enough to take on the whole project. So we're gonna have to do some multiple bids, get a bunch of big bidders in there and basically have a collective project to get this thing going, just like our friends in the south had to do. So we'll go down that process. But with all that said, I think the soonest we can do is mid-two thousand twenty-six, probably two thousand twenty-seven. Then we start the construction, it's about a year project, and then we'll get everybody back on the network. So, that's conceptual. We, part of our request to the state, we need to show the state our sincerity in this. And are we just asking for money with our handout? Or are we trying to, uh, kinda almost like the Schumacher session, are we bringing anything to the table? We need to be able to explain to the state that all the ancillary stuff, I, I don't wanna disparage our, our southern neighbors here. They, they built a project, they got money for the project, but they forgot the key part of the project was the connections. And that's what they're struggling right now. The state does not get involved in those projects. They won't yank the money because they're saying you're not ready. So we need to be able to show the state, we have a fun plan to finance all the ancillary stuff. We need your money for the big project. Give us the money. And this will take care of setting the stage for success. So part of our staff recommendation here is that we have a pot right now that we've established that's gonna be, right now, about six hundred thousand dollars, that's by October, that, uh, we have set aside for the wastewater program. There's a, in a, an effort that if we can tie an annual assessment to everyone that's had a twenty wastewater system, about four thousand residents right now, four thousand, four thousand accounts, I should say. Four thousand accounts growing every day are on our wastewater network. We come up with an assessment annually that we can cut across all the bills, so it's not gonna hit them all at one time. And that's the contribution by individual account owners to the wastewater. So it's not gonna be a massive amount of money all at one time, like the discussion's going on right now. If you need ten thousand to hook up, you need, no, we don't wanna be in that situation. We wanna nickel and dime this, that we can all budget for this accordingly, not only us, but our citizens. So we have an assessment that we approve annually, starts in two thousand twenty-four. It starts building our war chest for these projects. We get to a point where they give us the big lump of money that's in there, uh, in this diagram here, I'll show you, that's gonna be in the two, two thousand twenty-nine timeframe. That can shift either way. I use a thirty-five billion, or thirty-five million dollar amount. Uh, that obviously is dependent on what DEP gives us. But you see, we can build a war chest, that green line of money, uh, actually, that, that's the contribution per year. The pinkish line is what we would have in that war chest. That before DEP actually gives us a dollar, we would have close to three to five million dollars in the account that we are doing this other stuff with, putting in a twelve inch pipe, resetting our pump stations, buying the parcels that we need to do what we gotta do. We gotta set the conditions for all that. And right now, we don't, we don't have any fund source to do that. So we would have that money that would be directly tied to our wastewater plant. The money comes from the plant, it's basically a loan, low interest loan. We start paying that, it's roughly gonna be about a million and a half a year is our loan payment for that, for twenty plus years. Uh, so we have to have the money to cover that from our, our network. We have that once we get the system in place. And then the assessments can go away because now we funded it, we've installed it, we're done, the assessments go away. Now you're just paying your wastewater, your water, and that's it. So this is our recommendation, we can play with the numbers. Is it a hundred and fifty dollars, is it seventy-five dollars? Whatever we feel comfortable with as a board, that gives me the ability to sit down with finance and figure out what's the contribution that we're gonna have to show to W, or to DEP. So that, this slide solely is on the financing plan, our contribution. It'll drive a resolution, it'll drive an additional assessment, uh, that we would have to vote on in the near future. And, uh, it'll be definitely a messaging campaign that we have to have with our citizens tied to these public comment sessions uh, to get the word out that, uh, this is, in our recommendation, the easiest, the best, the more palatable way other than us waiting with our head in the sand until we put a new plan in and then everyone's gotta pay five thousand dollars to connect. That would not be a good day for any of us.
I applaud the work that you put in. Yes, very good. I applaud the work that he has put in. Oh, yeah, good. I do have a couple of questions about
Right, it's
If I'm understanding this right, in two thousand and thirty, if we, if we do this, we're gonna have six and a half million dollars. Is that, am I reading it right?
Yes.
Okay. So you're making several assumptions. One is that we're gonna have a thousand new homes, which
Yep.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure. You feel comfortable with a thousand?
Yeah.
I mean, I know it's a guess.
It is. Uh, we're averaging, and you all alluded to earlier, uh, we're in the two hundred a month, or a year range right now. So a, a thousand swag seven years from now is not a bad swag.
We have plenty of property to do that.
Yes, yes.
In two thousand and thirty, we have six and a half million dollars. In two thousand and thirty-one, we're not collecting anymore. But we have to pay, and pardon me from reading this reading, so we have to pay a million and five on the loan. So that's six, five comes down to five. And then it's gonna keep coming down, and in three or four years, we got nothing. But it's a twenty-year loan.
But towards the bottom there, we, we still have a current revenue that our utility department is making with our wastewater. So we should be able to
You're, you're making a big assumption.
What? No, sir, it's tied to the, the money that we're making for historically years with our utility department, with our water and our wastewater. We are generating revenue that had excess that we put into our service.
But it's, and it comes in at two hundred million and a half dollars? I don't think so. Are you taking a thousand homes? How much money is, do you think that, is that gonna generate?
We're, we're ending each year, at least the past two, three years, uh, with a five to seven hundred fifty thousand dollar above revenue excess in our utility. Utility on putting water and waste together. So we end each year with that much. Now, what we've been doing, rightfully so, is putting that into our strategic reserves. So we, we're gonna do the same. But you, again, this is not free money, this is a loan.
I understand, so we have to pay a million and a half, or maybe six, whatever it's gonna be in twenty years.
Yes.
I, I, I don't see, so you're claiming, or you're saying that four years worth of, five years worth of assessments? I, I, I don't see, so you're claiming, or you're saying that four years' worth of, five years' worth of assessments, six years of assessments, will get us, that, that'll cover a thirty-five million dollar loan?
No, no. The assessments is strictly for the infrastructure that we need to be doing, irregardless of the plant. We need to do that.
So what is that thirty-five million?
Thirty-five million they're gonna give us just for the plant.
Right, and we have to pay it back?
We have to pay it back.
And how we, where's that money coming from?
Well, once you get to that point in time, they actually give us that check, we have two pots. We're gonna have a, a chest of, you're saying, six and a half million that we collect with assessments. And then we're gonna have continuing revenue from our wastewater. And between those two pots, that needs to stretch out twenty years. The financial problem, we need to sit down and put more, deeper thought into when it comes to the finances. But conceptually, that ties to, what's the assessment? How long you want the assessment? And do you want rates to continue to go up? We gotta have all this discussion.
I mean, how much is our revenues for water and sewer gonna be next year? What's in the budget?
Three point seven million, I think.
Twenty-seven?
Three, three point seven million.
So you're saying that, like, that money, some of that's being spent? I'm, I'm just not sure how the math works, that's why, what I'm concerned about. I, I like the plan to get to where you wanna get to, I understand that. But I'm worried about, after the first five years, is it really is enough money to, to pay it all?
Until we get the firm number from DEP on the amount and the percentage they're giving us, payback percentage. That's, that's a missing factor that we will know in the next three months. That's tied to the loan. What, what, this plan is more focused on getting us set with the assessments to get stuff we need to get done. If they say no loan whatsoever, or a very low loan, and we got, we got money to do something at our level.
My only one concern?
Well, what you're saying, the revenue alone from wastewater in 2030 is four point five million.
That's what we're engaging in, yes.
And that would, is where we paid a million five.
If, if we roll out your revenue up until 2030 and you roll out your expenses with a, a pretty healthy increase every year, uh, you're getting, we're gonna bring in four point five million, and we're gonna spend three million, four, three million, not tied to the loan. That's just basic operations of our wastewater system and our water system. So just in that scenario, you have about a million dollar difference that is profit, I'll call it. And that continues as the years go on. We have an assessment pot of money at six point five at that time. You have a million dollars plus in revenue. So now you're gonna be able to have a firmer discussion of, do we continue an assessment? A hundred dollar assessment for a few more years? Or do we, you know, the five percent increase we do on the water, wastewater bill, we take it to six, seven percent? We, we can have a deeper discussion when it comes to that.
And on this, on a revenue generation, you took up five percent per year?
Yeah, that's including the five percent per year increase, yes.
Okay, I mean, our balance, our budget right now is balanced, right? This current budget we're going into is supposed to be balanced.
Yes.
It equals four, two point seven million dollars in metered water and liters of water.
Yeah.
So you have, I mean, you think we're gonna increase that by a million and a half, million six?
Your percentage, cuz that, that's, your percentage of five percent goes up every year for the next.
So is everything, I mean, we try to skirt about revenues going up five percent, we're good. And we always forget about the expenses going up five.
I agree.
It doesn't, I figure any increase is gonna be offset by the expense. That's what, I mean, that's usually.
Yes.
I mean, I'm just worried about borrowing potentially thirty-five million dollars. I, I think it's gonna cost the, the district or the homeowners in the district to have a lot more money than eight hundred dollars or nine hundred dollars for the next thirty years.
Until we get the firmer numbers from DEP, I can't, I can't speak to this, sir. I mean, that, that's a thirty-five million dollar loan on the train here. DEP can come back to us and give us fifty million. We ain't gonna be paying one point five million for a fifty million dollar loan. We're gonna be having two million dollars a year plus. That's a decision we're gonna have to make as a board, that do we accept their fifty million? And, and eat the twenty-year loan? Do we have the money to do that? I mean, that's a decision we're gonna have to make, but they need to put that on the table for us. They haven't put nothing on the table for us.
Okay, so what are your questions? Do we plan on, in your mind, this new plant, they're taking care of everything, they don't need the plan four? And you're, uh, we can get rid of it?
Well, unit four, once we got a new plant, unit four, we will have a, we will have the opportunity to either divest, connect, or keep.
So there is no concern that, well, it's not an issue of replacing unit four in twenty years when it goes, when it goes questionable? We're gonna have a good forty years with the.
We have twenty more years of unit four. That's the most I'll, I'll put my name on, twenty. Anything bad said, no.
I won't worry about it for twenty years.
But the, but that is also an asset that you believe we can sell to the hospital.
Very much so. They don't mind, I mean, someone else did it, someone else did one. Does that mean hospital? We just won't need it for our capacity.
I, okay.
Okay, so, based on what's here, if it came back at thirty-five million, you believe we have the path in front of us to pay that million five per year based on what our current, our strategies are?
It, it assumes assessments, uh, stop at 2030. It assumes that there's a five percent annual increase in our bills.
Okay.
And, I mean, I, I'm not fortunate to tell everybody, assuming no more COVIDs and stuff like that.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah.
That's our.
Yes.
So your best collective thinking at this time?
And what I can portray moving forward is take this out the twenty-year window.
Yeah, I mean, I, I know that, I know as we go along, you can always say, okay, thirty-one, thirty-two, we gotta do this additional assessment. I understand that.
Sure.
So really, based on, I guess, what you know now, or what we know now, it's, it seems logical.
If, if we're in the thirty-five million dollar range.
Right.
Thirty-five million dollars could get us a, a somewhat new plant with current capacity out here. That way.
So we need to plan with more capacity.
We need a new plant with more capacity. That's where the difference of that fifty million comes in the plan. And I just, I just don't know the appetite of DEP and how much their revenue is.
So let me ask you this then, if we only get, if we only have thirty, if we get thirty-five million, but we really need fifty, we're gonna just say, let's go with the.
Well, then I'll bring you, I'll bring back the plan that we have a thirty-five million dollar plan that's one point five million capacity, and we need to keep unit four for many, many years, that's half a million capacity. Thereabout, we got two million capacity, we're good. That, that's, that's the discussion we would have at that time. So I would like to come back to you all saying, I don't need unit four anymore. Thank you very much.
Sure.
And give me the ability to sell it.
Right.
Good discussion.
So now, 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 we have to decide if we wanna assess this month or month. Because we're talking about, two thousand twenty-four, we're talking about next November's bills, or going into the special assessment.
We need this starting one October, one January, so. We would have to bring before you all the resolutions that makes the assessment starting in January bills. Uh, and don't need a motion now. We're gonna have a public comment next week. I'm gonna bring back to you all the public comment, you can have public comment now. But I would say at the, no later than the November board meeting, we need to have a vote on the assessments for next.
So this would be a special assessment, that we send out, we mail out a whole new bill, or how do we do that?
It'd be a special assessment placed, placed on their bill starting in January. And it would be, we would carve it out by everyone's.
And what is sewer bill?
Yes.
The monthly bill that comes?
Yeah, so it'd be one fifteen bucks a month. It would be a special assessment for everyone's bill, only to a fifty dollars a month.
Oh, so you're gonna take it, divide it up, there'll be a, a monthly?
Yeah, we'll make it as painless as possible.
I don't know if it's worth the effort, I don't know. But the number of lots that have utilities available to them, and we not assess them a hundred and fifty dollars also?
No, everyone gets.
Even though they're not on the system right now.
Everyone gets assessed, irregardless of how you're connected to it. If you have access to a wastewater network, you can be assessed.
What about the lots that don't, aren't connected? Because this is for them. I mean, eventually, assuming a lot's become property of a lot, can they be assessed then?
I agree. And I will sit down with this man, and we'll figure out legally if we're good, or we're covered with that.
I mean, every lot or parcel should be assessed.
That'll probably end up being impact fees. You know, if it's, if it's a vacant lot, there's no, no access to the system. When they do bill, they'll, they'll pay impact fee that will be substantial. You know, instead of a fifteen dollars a month, we'll be paying, you know, three thousand dollars impact fees to bill.
I mean, if it's pleasant to deck, that's fine, that's good, we should do that.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, can you guys hear me? I don't know if my mic's working.
It's a green, you don't have green light on either.
Yeah, I said green light.
I got red, so I, I'm gonna, it's gonna be a big deal with.
Well, I got red too.
You hear?
I turned to you.
I'm alive.
We all got red.
Yeah, but it's just thank you. I think we're all good.
All right, public comment.
I'm sorry.
So we're bringing on these numbers?
Well, I mean, it'll be more thoughtful. When he gets done with the, he's gonna have a meeting next week with the public. Gonna take what public comments there is standing. And he's gonna come back to us with a resolution to start implementing.
I understand that, but he's gonna tell everybody, these numbers, the question is, are we okay with these numbers?
Yes.
I mean, assessments, don't we have to decide that?
Again, we're, we're at the conceptual point, but I, I need kind of an, an understanding that we're going down the right path. We can, we can bicker about the level. And you may have a bunch of citizens say, I'm good with a hundred dollars. I need to bring that back to you guys and say, the consensus from the group is a hundred. I'm saying we need one fifty, please make a decision. We're, we're at that point now. The staff recommendation, based on our analysis, is those numbers right there. That's what I need to make this work. And that's what I'll explain to our citizens.
It's all conceptual anyway, isn't it? I mean, it's all, it's a plan, so it's.
Well, it's, it's a plan that I just make sure I'm on the same page like this, y'all are going down there together. I don't wanna be going the opposite way.
Yep, the only other question I have is, where's the six hundred, eight thousand coming from?
Uh, we have three, and then as of one October, you all voted to put three hundred thousand in there, that's our start point. That's our six hundred dollar wastewater account.
Oh, so the money that's in the budget that we set.
It's on, it's on a line item in our reserves. We designated that as wastewater reserve.
Yeah.
And we're gonna throw three hundred and ten thousand in there on one October.
From our regular reserves.
Yes, and that's the start point, okay? That's the build-up.
Well, there are probably.
Okay, you'd be ready for public comment?
Yes, sir.
Public comment. I don't necessarily. Good guy, come out of your podium, please. I don't necessarily feel this way, but I think the board needs to be ready to answer this question, okay?
Name an address, please, sir.
I'm sorry?
Name an address, please, for the record.
Dave Gang, fifty-five, eighty, Metanet. Somebody's gonna ask you this question. I've got water and sewer facilities, okay? The system right now is serving me well. All of these improvements are for future development. Why do I care about that? Let, let the people that are doing the development pay their bill. I'm satisfied. It's like I say, somebody's gonna ask you that question. Well, what the first answer I would give you is, this is a fifty-year-old plant that is in dire need of significant repair. So whether it's a new wastewater plant or updating this one to meet what we believe is the need, this will not suppo, this will not continue on the way it is currently. So, one way or the other, the money is gonna have to be spent.
Okay.
That's, that's my.
It's, it's not for necessarily future development.
Just, not just that, it's for existing customers to maintain.
We've got bad sources.
We've got an old system.
Old system.
Not yet bad. All right, anything else? All right, that, that's good discussion, very good discussion. Okay, uh, discussion on the process to transform the special district into a village or city. And this is just the start of a discussion. It may go somewhere, it may not go somewhere. So with that, can I, who's idea was this?
This was a few supervisors, well, the citizens, uh, quote saying, can we at least have an open discussion and see that, like the president said, if there's any, if we move out anywhere on this, or just let it be?
Just for both.
I'm here.
So it was brought up by citizens and some supervisors, I being one of them. On what, what does it take for us to become a municipality where we can control, have better control of the things that we want done within our community? And I know, and I just don't know how big of an issue this is, I don't know how much the cost is associated with it. So I'd like to have a discussion to see where we may go on.
That's why I asked us to do it. I mean, I would have asked him two months ago to do this, but it's just a discussion. And I might as well just say it, if we become a city, we lose, or we gain a lot, if I, if I have the speed, you tell me. I hope we get more control of what? Of Sun Lake, uh, we don't, we're not under the thumb of the county in almost everything we do, everything. The problems we have with security, the problems we have with code enforcement. There is a number of things that, that will, will improve if, if we become a city. Now, I know taxes will go up a little, especially for those who have the big, big homes. But somebody like me, I paid over two hundred dollars more assessments than I do taxes. And I live in a tri-plex. And I think we're on a mission to go five percent a year, recent assessments. So at least that's what I thought, I heard. Uh, so it, it just makes sense, costs are gonna go up, but.
Well, we don't know that it's gonna make sense. That's why we have a discussion.
Why do you say it makes sense? Him as an individual, it makes sense, but we're here to, okay, I heard that.
Yeah, and this might be something for a board a couple of years from now. You know, I, I don't know, but I think it's, it's something, it's something that we, somebody should be talking about and looking at for the future. So.
Sure, so we dug into this at the very, you know, thirty thousand foot level, and you see the product on your packet, it's in your screen. So it's the state statute, one sixty-five. Obviously, in Florida, we have towns, cities, villages, and then there's this hybrid called a district. There's over twelve, eighteen hundred districts in Florida. Unlike many other places in the country, the necessity of a district came about when we were created. We, as well as many of our friends. And that was under a section one eighty-nine. Even though the county created us per se, they used a state statute. So that gives us the ability as a district to break out on our own per se and become a town, city, or village. There's a few requirements that would be needed to meet the criteria at the state level uh, to propose this as an option. Government board elected, uh, the government board agrees to the conversion. And then we at least provide four of the below services. I highlight what we provide. So we've surpassed the, the minimum of four already. Uh, we do public works, water, sewer, drainage, cultural facilities, so on, street lighting, so on. So no issue with that. We are not within the operational district of an, an existing city municipality. We are on the periphery of that, and we're just in the county person. Uh, the biggest linchpin here is that we would have to have a petition and forty percent of our qualified electors, so this are not, uh, our per se snowbirds, this is not, this is qualified electors, if they can vote in Florida. Forty percent of them would have to come, uh, support a petition that would drive a referendum, that we would present the results of that referendum to the state, not the county. County can't say no, they're, they're not in the decision loop. The state per se cannot say no if we met all the criteria of the state statute. So, uh, there, there is, we, we meet the criteria to do this. If you all decide, we decide as a team to do this. So I'm not worried about that perspective of it. You see here the process. We get fifteen hundred folks that are registered voters to say a petition is yes. We present that to the county supervisor of elections, they verify the count. And they say, you've got, you've got your quota. And then we have one year at that point in time to do, set the conditions for us to become this entity, whatever we determine, the name, we, we confirm our survey. Whatever we determine, the name, we, we confirm our survey, we consolidate all our debt. We just basically have to present to the state that it's not just off of the, a whim that we wanna do this. We've set our conditions structurally to do this appropriately, that we won't not be a burden to our county at that point in time. And then we do a referendum vote. So we have a year. So let's say this happens and whatever. We have a year from that time that the, the politicians approve to say we can do this or not. In that year, if we can't meet all the criteria from the state, then it's, it, it just dies on, on that. We leave it alone. Uh, if within that year, we are comfortable that we have met the criteria for the state based on that state statute. We move forward with a referendum vote. We have a vote, referendum. If the vote is approved, we present that to the state, special district accountability office, and they say, bless you, you are now a X, Y, Z. And we determine. Uh, if we don't, if the vote fails, then any board, any people here, any leadership here, we cannot readdress this within a two-year window. It just basically goes away. In two years, someone wants to resurrect the discussion, so we have to resurrect the discussion, and they follow the same process. The initial, there's a lot more. The initial pros and cons, and supervisors, they don't have a few of them. Uh, I'll start with the pros. I'm sorry, on the bottom. Uh, we basically receive the same respect, funding, and opportunities that all states or cities, towns, and villages in Florida get. A, a cornucopia of opportunities when it comes to funding, uh, sources. Half penny gas tax, uh, state aid, state shared revenue would all be accessible to us because we'd be, in the big boy world, we'd be a city, town, or village. I will use an equivalency. Our, our friends in the C brain, somewhat comparable in population size to us. Uh, much larger budget, but comparable population size. They get about two and a half million dollars of state money. Nothing to do with tax, state money, combination of the gas tax, combination of sales tax, combination of shared revenue. They get that, okay? So that's good. That, that's kind of what I can compare apples to apples a little bit. Uh, so that's a good thing. Uh, we would basically extract ourselves from the county providing specific services. They don't, they don't do a lot of specific services for us, but we would be on the umbrella, the sheriff's department, be, be on the umbrella, the fire department. You go for a, a permit, uh, at the county level, you can still be there, but we would now control our own zoning. We would now control our own building permits. We would determine that that house is built right on the right lot lines, and if wrong, we enforce it. Uh, so that puts a lot of power back on us to do it appropriately. I say appropriately, to do it our way. Uh, so that, that, that expands us a little bit, but also gives us a little bit of power. Uh, and then we would transition from a assessment model to a millage rate. And if you all understand, and you all pay taxes, we all pay taxes here. The millage concept is for every thousand dollars of value, assessed value, your house, you pay a dollar. One mill, a thousand dollars. So it's a very easy calculation. So if your house is assessed at a hundred thousand dollars, you will pay a thousand dollars if the millage rate is, let's say, ten, ten mils, all right? Uh, that's, that's a simplistic assessment model. But we would lose the ability to do assessments across the board for any parcel. It would be based on the assessed value of their house, of their business, of their land. So it's, it's a definite dynamic change that would happen. That would be definitely more equitable. I think to the example given, if you're living in, if you're renters, you're not paying, you're paying assessment possibly, but you're not paying, uh, millage, your owner's land. But if you're living in a hundred thousand dollar house, and you're not on a golf course, and you're not nowhere near Sun and Lake Boulevard or any, any high density area. You're, you're paying a thousand bucks millage, if I use a ten, ten mill model. Okay? You're paying all the same things to the county. We're not getting out of county taxes. We're not getting out of the thirteen point five mills, county schools and everything. That, that's gonna happen. We now change from assessment, you pay that, you pay an assessment. We change from that model to, we pay the other mills that we do across our tax bill, and we throw a Sun and Lake millage rate. Whatever that be, whatever you all determine that be. So we do that. Uh, the negatives, right now the negatives, is that while we provide a lot of services, when you, you move up into the world, level up into the world. Uh, there's some requirements that we do not have right now. We do not have a county or a city clerk. Uh, we do not have a dedicated police department, tax collection office, and elections office. So there would be some restructuring of our current organization, uh, as well as some growth if we wanted to go this route. Because that's the necessity of having a village or a, a city person. Uh, the most impact we would have would be on our commercial parcels. Because they are assessed at a very high rate per se compared to a house. That their thousand dollars they pay right now for the annual assessment would automatically go into the, you know, ten, five thousand. It would, it would go up. This is based on their assessment. Uh, also the challenging thing that we would be limited to, where we can assess everyone now. We don't have a lot of exemptions. Once you go to the millage rate model, there's exemptions. Over sixty-five veteran. There's, there's some odd exemptions in our state law with our millage rate that are automatic, that we have no say as leaders. So the example of this, that the county assessor gave me, the total valuation for Sun and Lakes right now is in the seven hundred and fifty million dollar range. All the parcels in Sun and Lake, about seven hundred and fifty million dollars, and that of all of them. Right now, the county locks off about two hundred million of exempted parcels. And that's just the way the county does it. So two hundred million dollars worth of parcels don't pay a dime of X tax. They wouldn't pay anything for us as well. Schools, possibly the hospital. There's some exemptions there. Uh, so the true valuation of what we would be able to do a millage rate against would be in the five hundred and fifty million dollar range using that model, that example. So we would be going after the five hundred and fifty million dollars of assessed values, and that's what we would build our millage rate discussion. Right now, we pay, if you took the model of our assessments and you kind of compared it to a millage rate model, we pay in the, and, that's, those are tax. That's, that was before the county came back and said, you have to do exemptions. So I apologize. When the county clarified that discussion, basically doubled it. So right now, our comparable model is that everyone in Sun and Lake roughly pays eight mils is our tax rate, if you compare it apples to apples right now. Uh, if you did expansion of government, you took out the exempted parcels, we would probably have to come back to the board. And you guys would have to prove that our taxes that we would need to operate would be in the ten million range. So it would go up by two mils. But that, that's, on paper, that looks okay. The challenge is, for me with my hundred thousand dollar house, and you say I pay ten mils, I'm gonna pay a thousand dollars in Sun and Lake taxes. I'm still gonna pay twenty-five, three thousand dollars to the county, but I'm gonna pay a thousand dollars in Sun and Lake taxes. I may be only paying seven hundred dollars in the assessment right now, based on where I live and my parcel identification. Uh, so that's gonna be a slight increase. The biggest impact here is my commercial parcel, and the biggest impact is gonna be my three hundred, four hundred, half a million dollar houses that are scattered throughout Sun and Lake. That would go from paying an eight hundred dollar annual assessment to a couple thousand dollars. All right, so there, there would be a significant emotional benefit in those households for that, that change overnight if we went to millage rate. I think we all need to have eyes wide open going down this path. Is that what's, that's what would happen. That's gonna take a little bit more financial rigor with me saying what the, our finance, county treasurer, trying to figure out those numbers to bring you a really firm number. But this is, run over the world, this is the number that it would look like. We would have to generate about five and a half million dollars in revenue to operate as a city. We generate about four million dollars right now with assessments. So that extra half, one million and a half would have to come from higher millage rate in some cases. Because there's a lot of our parcels now that we would exempt. We would have, we could have paid. We could have made them pay. Uh, and in this model with our assessments, we do make them pay. So, that's kind of the start discussion. Per your discussion.
You mentioned City Tower Village is very extension.
That, that's our pride of whatever.
No, but, but is one more valuable to us than the other, or is?
I don't think so.
No, we would, we would do a search, make sure we're not competing with another name. I've already done Sun and Lake, the only comparable waste district. So if we're Sun and Lake Village, it'd be fine. It's totally up to us. We would not pick a name that's already out there, obviously.
Let me ask you this. If we said to you, we'll leave it up to you, what would you recommend to us?
That's an interest.
Is this something we should pursue, or?
That's an interest, anyone, because we've had this discussion at our staff meeting this week. Uh, as a, as a professionally trained city manager, for me to represent Sun and Lake, taking whoever's in that seat there, be it a mayor, a president, whatever you wanna call them. Taking that person to Tallahassee, we would be at the big voice table then. I'll just be honest with you. We would be able to come up there and advocate for my ten thousand residents, that we are here for something that you owe us back.
So you like this idea?
I like it conceptually.
That's his back.
Yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's.
That's a silly question.
Why is it a silly question?
Cause that's his back.
It was his idea.
No, it was my idea.
No, it was his idea. It was his idea.
It was yours? I thought it was his idea.
I thought you.
I, I, I agree, same thing, but it's just, I just wanted to know the, what it means. And I'm, I'm, several things I like and several things I don't like.
Well, if we're gonna do this, I'm selling my house, cause I'm not gonna pay.
By some people who live in Avon Park and Shebring, do they pay the taxes and pay half a half a million dollar home? Surely they pay what we would here?
Oh.
Oh, they pay more.
Okay, more, pay more.
If you compare it to assessments, that's the only thing you can compare.
Yeah, assessments, not sure.
No, it's not assessed, but I'm at taxes.
Yes.
If Beverly had, in Sebring.
Yep.
On a golf course, or wherever, and it's worth whatever earnings it's worth, would she pay what we're gonna ask her to do here?
Oh, she'd be paying more.
I'd be paying more.
Pay more.
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I don't believe, if we do this, I'm already paying a hundred dollars. So whatever I go up, it's not going up to, I'm not gonna pay two thousand more. I'm gonna pay more.
Everyone will pay more.
But I can understand, I can understand somebody who has a half a million dollar home on the golf course. I can understand them. Because they're gonna pay a lot more. But I, the others, the other cities in this area have, they pay.
They all pay mils, yeah, and they all vote on the millage annually and.
I have to move on the golf course. A half a million would be divided by a thousand, right? That's five hundred, five hundred and ten. She can pay five thousand.
Ten, five thousand dollars a year.
Almost double.
Yes.
It will be double.
Yep.
Well, you're gonna be paying any number now. This is gonna nothing to do with the county.
Yeah, yeah, no, you, yeah, you gotta compare it against our assessments. That's why I say it's gonna hit.
So your assessment votes, nine hundred and five thousand. How does that work?
And then we have to pay for all that other stuff.
Yeah.
Yes.
I do wanna do that. The thing about Sun and Lake is, we're a closed community that takes care of ourselves, and we always have.
Yeah, but, well, I knew, but we can't do, have some of the things that we wanna do, and because the county won't let us do that, we can't control this, we can't control that. Now, it's.
What are we, what are we not controlling? We're getting our own, a new water plant. We have all our own utilities.
We can't control the building. And we're having people that are building into this area with housing that is below the standard that we would want.
Well, I think there's an easier way to fix that, obviously, if you go with this.
We tried. We went to the county, you said, we, we had them.
To that point, we did go to the county, but we went to the county, what, four or five years ago?
Yes.
Nothing, you know, there's nobody saying we can't revisit the county now that it's, we're grown up to the point that we've grown up and say to the county now, can we finally, can we relook at this? And see if you can change the standard?
There's got to be another. This is totally drastic.
I mean, is that possible?
Very much so. Again, this, everyone's hitting on it. Uh, the major disconnect here is, the major negative is there is a, there will be a massive increase in taxes, whatever. Regardless of where, that's, that's a negative.
And that's our job.
Yes.
And I don't, if, I would rather take a chance and revisit the county and see if we can up our standards. Than to do something this drastic and have to spend all this money and change all of our lifestyles.
Yes.
And that's exactly what you're doing.
We, we can reengage the county and say, we want to take over zoning and building per se. Let's explain that to them. We want to do that because we have this now set. I have a building inspector, I have this, we have these codes. We wanna alleviate you of that headache. Now, that's gonna make them lose some money, but it alleviates them from having a headache of staff and whatnot.
I think one of the.
We can reengage them.
One of the reasons they said no originally was they had so many lots that they.
Yes, it was, yeah.
And they've gotten rid of quite a few of their lots, so maybe we're, uh, tasteful for them to do it now. And actually, you can go back to the archives and just re, uh, resubmit what we tried to do the first time. They don't have to have a conversation. They're already decided, you know?
And, and think about, drive through Avon Park, drive through Sebring, our roads are maintained. We don't have huge potholes like they do. Well, our medium is mowed. It's not growing up on the side. Let's think this through before we do anything like this, though, cause we're.
It, it is discussion purposes.
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm discussing.
And like I said, it, it's inevitable, cause we are the biggest community in, in Highlands County.
I don't think it's inevitable.
But, well, I, I just think.
I would, yeah.
Oh, no, it's not.
It's not my life.
Not, not.
Yeah, definitely not. We just gotta, it helps, it helps set our understanding of, there's some things we just, we can keep complaining about, but we understand that there's no need to waste any breath on complaining. Because we're gonna be in this regulated world of a district, and there's gonna be some overhead from our county. And let's just put our energy into what we can address and not worry about some things.
Yeah, I think.
So that's where, that's where it comes in.
If you ask them about the zoning, I mean, I'd agree.
Sure.
Okay, Jeff.
Okay. Thanks for the discussion.
Sure.
There is public comment section. It's public comment on the transformation of the special district to a village or city only.
Dennis Swan, come on to the right. Uh, I really wouldn't have a lot to say about all this we're talking about. What I would talk about is, do you notice in Tampa, they try to raise the property taxes by sixteen percent, and it was voted down? You, you, you turn this into a political place, probably none of you guys will be here because you won't have the money to run. We'll end up with a bunch of people with big money controlling this, controlling the whole place. What's, what's happened in the north in these cities where this dirty money comes in, and they elect district attorneys, and they let, everybody that's under the control of somebody else. And then you get political patronage, and you get all these people in, you get a loaded government. I think that what you're doing now, if you can get some better control, is a good idea, but I think to go political is crazy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Last question. Good morning, Bill Norcross, resident. Um, I'm glad that Ray explained the pitfalls of probably going on this, uh, maybe a thought of being a village or a city, but, uh, let me think. One thing that really bothered me is that why we didn't have control over, of our various state money, COVID money, gas tax money. All that stuff, because we were refused that. Now, if you take that gas tax money, if we had that as a simple thing, for four years, we'd have a million dollars. And therefore, that Shoemaker project wouldn't be a big deal. So, uh, I understand that you, you wanna have some serious walk and discussion about it, which is, which is really right, because it's a, a big, big step. And I agree with Beverly that, I'll probably sell my house to him. And, uh, with Ray, uh, and, I mean, Mike, he brought up the situation that, uh, they've been kicking the can down the road on this Shoemaker road. The reason why they started it, because it cost twenty-four thousand dollars to plow it every year. And they didn't wanna do that every year. So it started out as a five hundred thousand dollar project. Now it's belonging to something really crazy, a major highway, which isn't really supportive right now, because it's not white enough, and they culled the sack down at the end. So, and far as the, uh, this, uh, subject at hand, that, uh, uh, I thought it would be a more simple project to convert to a village or a town or a city, but it's more complicated than that. but it's more complicated than that. So I appreciate the discussion and the seriousness of making a move, but I wish it was more simple that we could just vote and determine our fate. But it's, it's not. It's more complicated. I appreciate any discussion you guys have on it.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Moving on to Iron Age, a discussion on the total, total, terminal, it's not really, it's not terminal preserve, that's a separate penalty idea. It's actually the terminal mitigation of Unit 12 that we're looking at.
Yeah. There you go. Yeah. So there was a question, I think Ray asked at the last meeting, an update. We talked to Mr. Hornick. He's out of town. He'll be back next week. I'll have a sit down with him. The product in your packet is what's on the table right now from Sun and Lake. So that's the presentation, that is development off of Unit 12, all those parcels to the front off of Portega, the connection up there. The, in red area is what we are requesting is the 25 acre discussion that we've had with him for many months now. It's a consolidated area. It's not, it's not spread throughout the community. And we're holding firm to that. He's basically placed, this whole project won't hold until he gets done, the Sun and Lake project off the golf, off course down there. So until that proceeds and he gets working on that, he's really not putting much energy into this one. I'm going to have to talk with him because I want him to understand, we're not mending from that. We want a consolidated area that he's giving you the land on, you, it will be managed. That's where the tortoises go. And we're not going to count the right away and all this stuff that he came back on. So we're going to have that hard line discussion, but nothing else has changed other than when I meet him and if there's anything that is countered, I'll bring that to a follow on. That's all.
So basically, this is on hold for five years.
Tell him about five years, but yeah, whenever he finishes.
It's going to be on hold for five more. He's going to develop the other property. That took close supplies. He's not, he's just finishing that, that, the first one. So it's going to be four to five years, correct?
And just, yeah, just as a reminder, we're committed to giving him 25 acres. That's part of the agreement and we, the other 25 acres we make available for him to buy. So we're only giving him 25. The other 25, if he needs it for tourist preservation, he has to purchase the other 25, pretty horrid scenario.
So which box will be given?
Well, that's, that's going to be the discussion. Which one, what do you want us to, what's the 25 that we're giving?
So that's going to be given to him? The two boxes, have two boxes.
Correct. Yeah, we're committed to giving him, giving him 25. And then if he needs more than 25, we sell him anything he needs more than 25, up to an additional 25.
But he's got four or five years. We're looking to know.
My concern is, is he doing anything with the tortoises now?
He's there, he's out there.
I mean.
Finished assessments, the environmental's been out there. They haven't moved anything.
If we wait four or five years, aren't they going to multiply? And, and we can't, I mean, this is our property that we're losing.
No, it's his property. You know, he bought it.
He's still, there's still other 100 acres. It's ours. He hasn't paid for.
Well, right, but he's got a certain length of time before he has to pay that. I don't remember exactly.
He's got options.
Two, two years.
Two years, I think, and you can buy additional to your apartment, correct?
So the rumor that he's trying to sell that property to somebody else is just a rumor?
Yeah, I don't know. I don't think he can do that under further contract. The option is, the option he has to get is for him to first.
That would be a nice thing to find out.
I think that's in there that he can't, because that was my concern when we sold it. That we can give him that sweet ordeal and he turns around and sells.
I'll ask him, I'll ask him to ask. Listen, just a quick phone call. I haven't done face to face. Let me face to face with this guy.
All right. Okay. Moving on, will they add on items? Any? Uh, no, some petitions and communications. We've had this load from the high school or the Highlands County School Board, basically telling us, they don't care if we take care of Sun and Lake Boulevard or not.
There you go.
Or the traffic problem that they caused through their school. So we quit doing it.
Sell it, pretty much. Somebody besides the major, we're doing nothing on Sun and Lake Boulevard. And the traffic is going to just be what it is.
It's two sheriffs.
Is that really what we're doing? Because I got a concern that, that people who live here are going to get very upset. What happens is, what I think is going to happen, happens.
So we've expressed our concern. We had, this letter came and we were still doing it out of our due diligence for that reason. And then this letter came from the school board and the day we got this letter, two school board commissioners came to meet the onsite to see a morning and an afternoon session, what it really looked like. First time they ever saw it. They were concerned. They, they were concerned for us. Their traffic manager came the following day to do an assessment. We talked to the county engineer. He's been tasked to work on some hard infrastructure changes there. So I believe there's efforts going on, not us involved in it. But we prompted them based on our concerns that something needs to be done for the benefit of everyone in that community. Not only the parents.
I gotta tell you, it's six weeks. Sun and Lake Boulevard is going to be a disaster.
They knew, the sheriff took over.
Yeah, so the sheriff's there now.
In six weeks, Sun and Lake Boulevard is going to be a disaster.
And all the right parties are aware and they're, they're involved. And when they reach out for our feedback, I'll give them feedbacks.
I mean, I go out the other way, so.
Advise you should, if you're a teenager, make a call.
Oh, definitely, yes, I know.
You know, if, if a child gets hurt or. Lord, I'm missing.
Yep.
And that's a real possibility.
And we're pressing. We talked to the commissioner here. We're pressing and the right folks. That's on my agenda for next week, the county commissioner and the county engineer. Is that, I'm still concerned about that. You know, we're not doing anything. I'm concerned about the impacts of Sun and Lake, of those spots.
When we last talked, you said there was property back there they could buy, right?
There is, there is a parcel on the commercial side that they couldn't, the commissioners are aware of that. They're pursuing that angle. They're reengaging, talking to the church to see if they can get access there. So they're doing stuff. Just we're not in the loop anymore, day to day.
Well, I know if you arrive and have a business and we created that kind of mess, it closes now.
Yeah.
Okay. Moving on, staff reports. Golf and clubhouse. Mr. Murphy and Mr. Lea.
Good morning, superbieters. You guys have our past report for the month we sent to Mr. Foster. Just quick on mine, I have, before I order four loads of brick concrete, Mr. Rose, and it's on stock, so the pond's come up. So we'll get to them when it goes down. That will be a winner project. All our application is complete.
It's in the GM report, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
It's in the GM's report on our club and golf course and clubhouse. Sorry.
Oops. So all our applications are complete. We probably will try to verticat one more time after mine only comes or prior, do a light verticap and lay a top. We do have a busy month getting ready for that event. We have lots of tournaments, as we seen earlier. We will try to get all of our pre-emergents out for pro handling control this month. And we do have a golf fertilizer app scheduled for October as well. I know Mr. Foster and Craig was aware that we had some pump issues from whacking last week, but those have been censured. So other than that, that's about all we have on the golf course, unless you have any questions on what I see Ray's with. Go ahead, Ray.
I mean, I usually don't do this, especially to you. But I think he's done a heck of a job on the golf course.
That's true. Mr. Rose gave us a lot of confidence.
I mean, I've been here, I've been on the red team for 10 years. It's the best I've seen it.
It's only going to work better, I promise you, you know.
Hopefully I can say that next year.
You will. It'll be better.
Now, I, I agree. And I've heard of several different people that report something about this.
By the way, the Florida winner, Omack says it's going to be a wet and cold winter, so we'll do everything we can. And Mike and I have already set out some dates to use our air to gas machine after we start rolling them and beating them up for all the tournaments we're going to have. But we do have a game plan for the winter as well.
I will say one thing.
Yes.
Just so, because I have one.
Yep.
I think you can wait a little bit, give it a little bit more time. When you punch the greens, when you punch there and then you open there, I think we don't get a lot of flame in the summer. I don't think it's necessary to open the other course as quickly as possible. Like get the greens moving more time to heal. Then I don't want to say that word.
Well, next year, so next year, I'll send you my golf tour practices. We've already started work on the, next year I'm going to do something a little bit different on the last one. I'm going to try to do a solid time just to get more sand into the chambers. So when we airify and pull the cores, we get a little bit of the old sand back down in the holes. So really what I'm trying to do is get a full five inches of more coarse sand going under the winter, so it helps to move the drainage. So we'll probably do the two cores next year and then kind of change it up at the end next year.
But you also cut the, you cut the rough on here a little bit lower, didn't you?
We did lower it. We're now at an inch and three quarters. We'll see how winters, it's a big difference. It is. And like I said, it's, it's a small sacrifice, but we'll keep doing it.
Are you going to do the year before, please?
What's that?
The court.
No, 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 I am. We're done.
You've done three already.
We've done three core audations this year.
Yeah.
Well, we're done. We have air to gas. I mean, that was the whole purpose of buying that, so we didn't have to pour as much. Our roof structure is a lot better. Our drainage, I mean, if you watch the rain, it sets for a couple of minutes and it's gone. So we're in better shape than we were a couple of years ago, for sure.
Didn't I see where you looked like you took samples from the greens?
Yes, there we poured them. Our soils are all good. Our even colored essays are good. We're in a good position.
Good, good, good.
I guess I got one more thing for you. I guess just, I was going to wait for Mike, but I guess this will come under you. We've had some problems recently with handicap parking. Like it's handicap parking around the greens. Is it time for us to put a sign up or something, park here or do something? Because I got to tell you, handicap parking is striking out all over the place.
Well, there's still the 30 foot rule and, you know, there's, there's some people that really need it out there. I see them. I'm a little bit more lenient on some of them. Some of them we try to ask. I'll ask myself. It's really, it's, it's hard, it's hard to address. I mean, you try to tell them to do 30 feet. I mean, that's, that's the golden rule. And there are a couple of people that, I mean, look, if somebody's that handicapped and still play the game, I'm for it. We used to have signs that we put behind the greens and said, park here, handicap parking. Maybe it's time to go back to that, because I got to tell you, if you say 30 foot rule all you want, people are not adhering to it. And as a, as a golfer, it's very difficult to tell somebody not to park there. A lot of people aren't saying anything about it and let it go. So maybe you have to say, here's where you go.
We'll, we'll get back into our starter.
I'm just throwing it out, maybe.
I, I agree with you, Ray. I'm not necessarily. When was that? I, I don't remember recall that.
The main thing.
How long have we had signs?
Go here.
Right.
It's been maybe 36 or 37.
Yeah, we don't want to use to.
We used to have a blue.
A blue stick.
Blue stick.
Yeah, right.
I think it's time to do something, because I'm telling you, they're driving, and it's not just the members, it's public. Especially on weekends.
Correct.
They're all.
And the, the population of golfers that have handicap flags is going to increase, for sure. I mean, obviously, the number one goal of the whole situation is not wearing our turf. That's, that's the number. We don't want to wear out our turf. And especially high players, because as we push for the green, everybody, the more holes you get played out of those areas, that, you know, that's also, the traffic can all start to condense down there. So I've had some round one conversations with folks and say, hey, listen, you know, we're just trying to educate them on what to look for and what not to do. And a lot of folks have trouble, like you said, all of our greens are elevated, pretty much on both of our spot hills. A lot of them have trouble trying to walk up and down, down the hills. So we're just trying to educate them, where is the area that's least played from? That the cart is going there is going to affect everybody else in the league. So trying to get a little better awareness of, you know, stay away from the green and get where you need to get. And go around the back of the green, you know. 95% of golfers don't hit over the green on 1% to 5%, but I think it's a lot of education. I, I don't think if we, if we put a handicap spot in one spot, I'm not necessarily for that, because I think that, I think that starts to add to it. I think we're promoting.
We think we're going to educate these people by talking to them.
This, yeah, and this is going to be a hot topic for the next 30 years. It's been a hot topic for the last 30 years. I don't know if there's a perfect system, unless we get rid of golf carts and get scooters or something, but.
I'm just telling you, it's, it's starting to get worse again.
And like, there's, there's more people with handicap flags too, but I agree with you. It's, it's, it's not a simple thing. I mean, as long as we accomplish a goal of not wearing our turf.
Why don't you try to identify two spots by blue states for people to partner?
We can.
Maybe, maybe left, right, back.
And you still need to, yeah, and you're still going to, we could look into something like that.
I could do it, no, no, work or not.
We'll come up with a, with a system and hopefully get some clients with it. Okay.
Well, just touching on that. I mean, the, the biggest thing is, is that they still got to get to that spot. So if they're driving up around the right side or the left side of the greens, I mean, it's, it's going to be a free fall when you do that.
I used to do back, but they're doing.
I think we hit it originally with back to the green.
Right.
Well, yeah, we'll definitely look at it. I, I think too, you know, once we get the starters back up and try to talk more about it and get Rangers player assistance out there. Hopefully we can have some enforcement there as well. Other than that, that's all I have. One of the lakes, some of the lakes are getting green. When, when do we schedule the, it's monthly. We just, we just.
It is monthly?
Yes.
Yeah, it's not just not too long.
Yeah.
And then the last week or so.
Oh, because I think my turtle five was really green.
They had the algae in it.
I guess so.
So we do five? We did that monthly, huh?
Yes, sir, every month during season. Mike?
Just to clarify, that, that is a contract through the district office, not through the golf course.
Oh, is it? Okay.
Solitude?
Solitude.
Solitude, yeah. Just, just for our rings. All right. So if you're looking at our report, it's going to look a little bit, this is the first time you've seen it in this kind of format. Talking with Mr. Foster, we, we had discussions of what made the most sense in comparison, apples to apples. Whereas the last time we were comparing kind of prior month to the next month. In discussions, we noted it'd probably be more helpful to see how we're doing if you compare it to the prior year of the same period. So you see on this report, you know, on the golf side, with our average rounds going up. Member rounds are up 4%, outing rounds are up 5%, public rounds are up 12%, total rounds are up 6%. Green fee revenue is up 9%, driving range is up 2%. And then the kind of Achilles heel this year has been approach shop revenue, and that's kind of across the board and the business being down 23%. It's kind of been that way all season for us. So they're comparing, this is comparing August this year to August of last year. So this is a year in the year report of how our business has grown from last year to this year. So staying on the golf side, that's what we've had in the past 30 days. Obviously, you know, we have the Sertola two man tournament right after the meeting last month. As you can see, that, that tournament brought in $32,000 worth of revenue, some in greens, some in approach shots, and then also some food beverage. So you can see it's a pretty large portion of our golf revenue for the month in a three day period. We just had the Crunchfield Hawkins tournament. That brings in about 5,000 K in revenue with food and greens fees. The DAB tournament, just so you know, that, the reason why some of those numbers are in there is because when I generated this report before the actual tournament came out, so I'm updating it prior to the meeting. So the DAB tournament, that's the one we moved the paddock today to September, but we also turned it over to them. So, you know, we host the tournament. We kind of help them along. They didn't have a huge turnout. I mean, we're going to try to help them along as we can in the system and getting their turnout up and around, but they only have 44 players. So about $1,600 in revenue for that. Just on that topic, it didn't necessarily hurt us. They didn't use up a big block of tee times, so we worked around and sold some other stuff. Obviously, I mean, they're fairly new to running their tournament, I think they can be successful, I think there's an audience for them out there. So we'll, we're going to work on a horrible one next year again, knowing, um, uh, move on. So upcoming events, we've already kind of listed these earlier, we have the minor week coming, um, ten, ten, we have the MGA member mentor, um, the twelfth, Karen Arts on the fourteenth, WGA Oktoberfest on the eighteenth and nineteenth. Um, five cap tournament on the twenty-fourth, we have the MGA Halloween couples on the twenty-eighth. As you know, the number of tournament schedules out, some stuff we got working on coming up, um, working with Mr. Bossard, um, getting the building expanded, the roof replaced, the roof replacement is still going on. Uh, we are going to upgrade our system, so as you know, the district office has upgraded their system to the voice over internet phones. I can't remember how far back it is. Um, our situation, we had that lighting struggle a while ago, kind of knocked out, it didn't completely knock out our phone system, but we lost a few phone lines. Um, so we kind of juggle that on a daily basis. So we were going to spend a lot of money to, um, repair it, but found it as an opportunity, we're actually going to put it in insurance plan because we had some other stuff to go work on too, I mentioned. Um, so we're actually going to do the same system that the district office has, so our phone systems will actually work together since it's over internet. So Mr. Cameron down in the end, he's had a must with that. Um, our audiovisual system, so our TVs, uh, if you've been to trivia or bingo, if you notice the TVs and stuff aren't working correctly, that same, that same mic is far messed up, that system pretty bad. It's very antiquated, um, from long, from, I don't even know what it was, but if I remember the building was put in, I'm sure. It's going to be very costly to repair and it's, since it's antiquated, you know, I was working with our IT guys and our audiovisual guys, it's, we're looking at actually replacing it with a new system. So I, and again, we started the process, um, with Nicole and Mr. Bossard, um, putting in an insurance claim on that because it's such a big number. I just wanted to bring up just a bit of that. Sorry, I know I'm being a little long today, but. All right, on the restaurant side, same comparison year over year, uh, food sales have thirty-one percent increase year over year. Revenue sales are up twenty-six percent year over year, which is a twenty-nine percent overall increase in revenue in the restaurant. Total entree service year over years are twenty-four percent. Um, average entree cost did go up eleven percent, which kind of helps in that a little bit. Uh, and then just the beverage cart have nine percent decrease, um, which is definitely worth a discussion, um, that I will be having with my staff as that number came out. The little rounds go up, that shouldn't happen, so that is on my list of things. I got, so comparing on the entree average by day, um, what I, what I did to make this compare more apples to apples, so you're getting average Monday entrees, average Tuesday entrees instead of total entrees for a month. Because if you look year over year, there could be five Mondays last year and four Mondays this year, so it could skew it a little bit. So here's your averages, um, just bear in mind that if we have big events or things like that from one year to the next that may go or may change dates, that, that skews those numbers a little bit. So it's not, it's not just out of card numbers. So that's why sometimes you can see where they jump up or go down, um, a little bit, but, um, in general, uh, obviously if our total entrees have gone up, our average entrees have gone up as well, so. On our next, uh, events for the next thirty days, on that side, we have trivia night, um, on the ninth, live music on the twentieth. Uh, we just had bingo earlier this week, but we'll have bingo again. Um, obviously we have the couples dinner on the twenty-eighth that will close the restaurant for dinner. Um, we also have, I want to put this in here just so you know, we actually have twenty-three total banquet for the month of October. That's big, small, member, non-member, all of those, so, um, that's a number that I haven't presented to you before. So, I mean, we do a lot of events next, though I put that point, so twenty-three total banquet, that number could have gone up since I've done this. On the miscellaneous side, again, sorry, I'm on Wednesday, but I want to remind you that Thursday we have the admin health service awards, so Thursday night the restaurant will be closed, that notification has gone out. The new menus rolled out back, uh, first of September, received plenty of great feedback on that. We're still working on, um, some of our weekly specials, we have added some things in some weekly specials that we're going to do, trying to get the notification out, um, a little faster as we get those entrees and know what they are and advertise them more. Um, working with the district for that help. So one big thing that I want to let everybody know, obviously, I think we're aware of turn two breweries, a local brewery in town, um, right outside of Tanglewood. They have started distributing their product through a local distributor. Um, so we are actually, um, able to now, what we're going to do here in the next couple of weeks is we're actually going to bring in two of our local, um, draft beers from them. So it's a craft beer, so we're going to add two, just, just adding, we're not taking anything off our task, but we're going to add two new craft beers on tap in the restaurant that is local turn two product. So I think that's pretty neat to do. Craft beers, craft beers are a little more expensive, but I think, and, and we could always take that out too, so if they have something to do or something different you want to put in there, we can rotate it out and just give them two taps, so.
Good idea.
Thought of that a second.
Yep.
Uh, with that said, that's, that's all I got for you today.
Okay. I got a few questions. How did, how did last Friday's event go?
Last Friday, I mean.
Yeah, you had entertainment.
You had entertainment, so the last, the last two entertainments we had have been actually pretty, pretty good. So we're getting up, um, you know, we're still in the off season, so I think, I want to say they're both pretty similar as far as about a hundred guests or so, and that's, that's before walk-ins or just people that want to come in and.
When you give me that number, that's total reservations, right?
That is.
If they come in at four o'clock, like they did last night, it was like twenty people.
Correct.
That's included.
That is true, yeah.
I still think you got to revisit the entertainment during the summer. I'm not so sure it's worth it. Couple of other comments, uh. This report here says you average two hundred forty-six meals on Friday per week, per month, off of the month.
Right, so that, so.
That's pretty good. I, that's like if you don't have that many people instead of like.
Right, so just remember that includes events as well.
Huh?
That includes events.
Yeah, but that's like capacity every Friday. I just don't think the number is right. The other thing, I mean, it's fine, the other thing I will tell you is it's great to show all these sales increases, but the reality is, if I look at July financials, your sales are up twenty-three percent, but your payroll is up thirty-seven percent and consequently.
Right.
You lost ten thousand more than you did the year before. So what I'd like to ask you.
Sure.
Is this is green, but I want to see the expenses.
Sure, so this, these are obvious numbers, so do you have to see these financials yet?
I know.
So, so.
These didn't. Did you give an estimate on your expenses?
Sorry?
You gave an estimate on your revenues.
We get the golf financials in front, we did the month-to-month expenses.
Yeah, we're a month.
I'm sorry?
Your golf financials in the front, there's a month-to-month of all the revenues.
And it says I lost ten thousand dollars or he lost ten thousand dollars in, in the restaurant from that till last year. So all these pluses don't mean anything and the expenses are not in draw. No, what I'm asking is, we give an estimated expense on this report. It's a good, it's a good report. I'm just saying, let's, let's take it to the next step and show how much it costs us to get this one.
Yeah, I can do that.
And then the last question is, how much are we raising the booze bar?
Um, so we, I was working on that all last week, trying to estimate that. I think, um, you know, I, I calculated all the numbers out, and there, there's not going to be any large increases. Um, I think we're looking at the, the main one as far as, say, draft beer goes. I think, um, the, the member price of pitcher beers probably going to drop a dollar. That's probably going to be the only thing that really goes up a, a whole lot if we go up on the, uh, like draft, or, or, I'm sorry, well drinks and, and all those. I think we're looking at a twenty-five cent to fifty cent maximum on those all through there. So very minor, very minor change to that, and I'm, I'm going to have those posted and.
Well, it's supposed to do the back of total perks, right? Which is.
Correct, so I'm going to have those, I'm going to try to get all that stuff kind of out of the public eye here within the next couple of days. I have calculated all through all of those and.
Now, if you were to guess the percentage that we're raising the price of alcohol, you would guess what?
Um, overall, yeah. There's a lot of stuff that I don't think is going to go up, so I think you're looking at five, five to ten percent on the total.
So if we're raising the price approximately five percent.
Five, I would, I would say five percent. I didn't put a number on that, it's kind of hard to put a number on that because there's a lot of items that will not change. Can beer will not change. Or can, can beer, there'll be no change in can beer.
Well, that's probably a nine, nine percent decrease year over year on your beverage cards.
That's right, that's definitely one thing to look at.
Right.
And I can, and I can break that down into different segments and we're going to have to.
And certain personnel itself.
And we're going to look at that too.
Yeah, I mean, twenty-six percent increase in beverage sales, so we're going to raise.
Well, no, I.
Well, he's talking about beverage.
I'm talking about beverage.
Oh, I told beverage sales, he's up to twenty-six percent for the month, so we're going to raise the prices.
Yeah.
I don't know. We're still at lowest, we're on.
All taken.
I'm. To me, it's just a way to.
I think it's.
Just part of business. Except for can beer.
Does can beer fit? Bitches are going to twelve bucks? Huh? Did you say the bitches are going to twelve dollars?
They are, they are current, they're at their member price.
I'm sure they're going to twelve to thirteen. That's probably going to be thirteen.
And I include that, 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 as always, that price, well, it includes tax, so.
Do people really pay more than thirteen dollars for a pitcher beer?
Yes.
I, no, 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 I mean, at, at our restaurant, I don't mean, I know, I know the price, I know the price very well.
Yeah.
But I never see anybody paying more than thirteen dollars.
It, it definitely happens, but most everybody buying pitchers and they're all member groups.
It's really not a member price, it's really a.
Yeah, there's not.
Excuse me.
Yeah.
All right. Okay, General Counsel.
Okay, I'll pull up for you guys, so that we did have a meeting, staff meeting, uh, your boss had met with, uh, Mr. Brooks of Litigating and Accurately Handling Avanti. We had meetings, uh, about the production that we're gathering to provide him, um, and as far as I know, that's going according to plan. Um, I am, I'm sure you've heard by now, but I'm retiring at the end of the year. So there's an RFD currently out, uh, for seeking a replacement, so we'll, you know, I, I don't know how, how involved I'll have to be in that process, but I'll, and I'll be available even after, you know, beginning of the year. I'll still be available without moving that down or anything. So, other than that, there's any questions?
I have. Well, according to the last meeting, you were going to bring us something on the new order areas that we'd have to agree on or sign off on, or. This is according to what you said at the last meeting.
On the?
The new property that, we were talking about the states last year, I mean, last meeting, or is that final next?
The only thing I can think of is that, did we modify the?
Yeah, you said you had to bring it to us to, for us to approve the modification, is that not true?
No, I mean, it didn't approve, so the, the, my recollection is that we had the, the legal description, there were two separate parcels. And the legal description was modified to incorporate the two parcels in the void. And so there's no substantive change at all, so I was just informing you that that.
I was just recording, you said you were bringing.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I'll check, but, uh, I think it's, there was nothing technically new other than that provision. Oh, sorry, one other thing, uh, the turn two brewery still having their sign issue. So I know that Tanglewood has gone through a management change and I have to get with boss about this and trying to get them to kind of come on board with allowing turn two to put that sign outside because there was a disconnect apparently at some point. They, uh, Tanglewood said, yes, we'll allow them to do it, but they wanted to charge like a hundred and fifty or some, two hundred and fifty dollars a month in rent for a, you know, this tiny little sign. And they never sent anything over for turn two to actually approve in writing. So hopefully, once we have this, once this new manager gets installed and we have to jump boss, that's a chance to do it, then we can get that thing there.
General Manager's report.
Yes, we had your, uh, manager's report there towards the back, we'll just skim through that, a lot of data there. Uh, human resources, we're pretty good on our, uh, manning right now with all our positions. We filled the last few that were vacant with our utility and our code enforcement individual, that was a void. So we're good on that, so truly the only openly vacant position is the, uh, what we're calling the operations chief. Uh, we're still figuring out, uh, the job responsibilities of the individual, how many departments they manage. And to be honest, to be honest, we didn't do necessity to that individual. Uh, I, I don't know, but I'd be hard pressed to say, I need a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to pay a new person, and I think it's handling just fine. But I owe that to you all with a more firmer, uh, data point there. Um, so we're good on staffing, we did have, we initiated a employee of the month. We had our first last month, uh, that was a, uh, very well received and appreciated, I believe. That, that interestingly connected to our temp agency, they have their own program, external to Sunlight, and they identified one of our temp workers as an employee of their organization, department. So, uh, we had two great, uh, team building events last month with Ruth, with our, our employee of the month, as well as, uh, as Coral from the temp agency, which we followed up with hiring her full-time. So she's not a temp agency reporter anymore. I'm all about picking talent, so she's good about filling a void for us for talent, so, uh, and she's very appreciative of working for Sunlight District, so we're good on the employment role. We got some ongoing training, uh, we did some code enforcement training, um, I'm on page five here. Uh, I got Coral and Cindy are in the Highlands County Leadership Class, it's an ongoing program, basically good for us with networking and dealing with the leaders in Highland County, getting, uh, Sunlight involved in those dialogues and discussions, so that's good. Uh, we're continuing projects in our roads and maintenance with sign upgrades, potholes, uh, landscaping and so on. And we're really identifying some concerns that are bringing to the county. Uh, our, uh, ongoing efforts of maintenance of Sunlight Boulevard, by the way, a county road, uh, are, uh, an interesting catch that Coral dug into. We've been paying the lighting bill for Sunlight Boulevard for many, 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 many years. So we fixed that and, uh, the county will be getting that bill from now on. And, uh, it, it's not a massive amount, seven, eight hundred dollars a month, but it adds up over time. So, uh, we, we've corrected that, it's county road, they pay the lighting bill, it, that's common sense, I can't see no one pushing back on that. I'm sure they will, but I'll deal with that. And, uh, but we're, we're consistently identifying some, uh, little subtle gaps in our, in our programming, our processes, our missions. We're addressing that across all staff, so I appreciate that. Uh, something that, just for your situation awareness, the new meters, new meters going in, we're about eight hundred to a thousand now of the new meters. We are not doing live reads, the next bill will actually have live reads going out. But what was interesting that how effective this program will be, just since we turned the meters on and started capturing data, we, uh, the way the system is built, it, they have a sense of support of suspected leaks in our entire network. To the house number, and how many gallons it costs them. And so just in a two-week window, the system identified twelve individuals, all households, that had massive leaks, thousands, twenty-six thousand gallons of water that was just running. This could be a running toilet, a broken power, or whatever. And because of this new system, we're able to identify that within the office, we contact the individual immediately, a lot of them are out of state, and we say, we're going to shut your water off, you haven't built, let's fix this. So it's really identifying a large sip of water that's just running. And the new system is catching it and it gives us the ability to influence that immediately to the benefit of our citizens. Because the reality is, not only would we be wasting water, is that in some of these cases, we would never get any capture, any revenue of thousands of gallons of water that's going out to the battery. So, uh, I see that continuing to be a benefit and a perk that our residents need to understand, we're looking out for their interests as well, because it identifies indeed for them to get a plumber, plus to send somebody out there. So, uh, so that was, it was an interesting sideline of, uh, the new system.
Yeah. Ready.
Uh, again, after the meeting, we talked golf, we talked, uh, restaurant, I, I got you, Mr. Brooks, we'll, we'll update some data in there in the GM's report. A lot of that data is captured in the report, but I will bring it over here, so it's a one-stop shop, so I got you. Uh, we're doing good on community services, um, a lot of utilization of our resources here, um, the basketball court's being very well utilized. A lot of utilization of our resources here. Um, the basketball court's being very well utilized. I've, I've come on weekends with my kids playing there. There's been no negative reports. They're keeping the place, maintaining the place. And we're actually gonna move the other, like we discussed, get the other nets working. So there'll be two courts. But that has been the backlog is, there's a lot of people showing up during weekends to play, but there's only two places to play. But they're waiting, and they're waiting patiently. So we're gonna get that corrected in the near future here. So we get these two active courts. And then I will be bringing back to you how we can pay for the restriping of the court. That is gonna be a bill if you want to make it officially two courts. Uh, that'll probably be in the next sixty days. We'll bring back that plan. Everything we're doing now is within our budget and moving the nets and so on.
Can I ask a question of the basketball court?
Yes, sir.
Well, we're gonna try and do correctly tomorrow, we stake the two ends and put them on the side and make two courts that way?
Yes, two short. So we're gonna shift the ones that are there a little bit left, and we're gonna put the new two ones in. So you're like, you're able to play four single games?
Right.
Or two short.
Okay, good.
So we're doing that, well with that, um, not gonna get too much into the budget finances. Our budget numbers are looking good overall. And the good news in there, it's not relying on any, um, additional revenue from like the water meters or anything. It's just based on, we've been very aggressive in beating the bushes and people paying their bills. And I'm not even talking residents. That's great. I appreciate them coming up, clearing their, their past invoices. State grants, federal grants, FEMA grants, actually getting them to pay us. There's a lot of money that's been sitting out there with some of our bondholders that are selling these parcels for us. They've been sitting on some buckets of money that we want in our coffers. So, uh, there's been a lot of money generated in that area and holding some of our land permit fees, uh, land clearing fees, and just forcing the issue with those folks having to pay what they're supposed to pay. Uh, so, uh, we've been really, uh, tracking down that. That is showing in a good bump in revenues, uh, that we will bring to you once we do the audit this month. That'll be the discussion I had with you all, bring a budget amendment to show you what we're, what we're going to recommend to do with that excess revenues in 2020. What should we roll them over to and so on. But we're looking good across all our budget line items there. Uh, note towards the back on, uh, we talked the Employee of the Month, Master Calendar. We had a very, we're making more robust the one-stop-shop calendar on the district website. So previously, it just showed board meeting, it showed whatever. Very simple comments. Uh, we've added all the, uh, golfing events, put them on there. We're adding some of the restaurant special features on there. So when you click on that little calendar icon on the, on the district website, it'll take you to a, a, uh, calendar. That'll just show you the gamut of everything that's going on in Sunlight. Uh, so it's a one-stop shop, it's trending, and it, that's been a major feedback from our citizens saying, you want me to go to the golf website for this and the restaurant website for this. And we're trying to make it a one-stop shop. She's got this one. She can run the dog on that one. So I appreciate that. And, uh, we're spreading that away. We're doing a staff hall, town hall in October. We'll be shutting down the district offices, uh, uh, starting at one-thirty on that day, the day, the twenty-fourth. Uh, gonna be in here, do some staff training, some team building. Uh, I'm now giving them basically three months of me in the seat. Gonna have the heart-to-heart with some of them and group collectively so they understand the main voice from the tower. And I think no issues. But I wanted to take that opportunity, and then we'll, uh, we'll do some operations that day. Once that meeting's over, pool will be back operational, security will be back on call, and we'll, we'll get back to business. But I just wanted you to be aware of that. Uh, we talked the RFP. Haven't seen any feedback, but we've given the RFP for our legal counsel a sixty-day window. And we pushed it out to all the resources in Florida, uh, many of these cities and so on, district, special district meeting. So, uh, we got mass saturation there to see if there's any local as well as, uh, regional feedback on a, uh, council. No issues with the complaint tracker. Staff is knocking down a lot of those issues that come to my level, and we're dealing with those on a day-to-day basis. Separate from the report and the, uh, on your agenda, we had a few topics here. We had no expenditures over twenty-five thousand that did not require, doesn't require you to vote. You guys captured those, so in your packet, in section O. We've had, uh, what is it, five expenditures over twenty-five thousand. They were either tied to a budget amendment or a separate vote you all did. So we're good on that. We're getting ahead of that. There's no surprises coming up. Uh, I'll continue to show this because based on our, our policy, uh, you need to be fully aware of all the expenditures, uh, over twenty-five thousand.
Can you just tell me, what is the, uh, the gearing company CIP golf equipment? It's on, it's on that seventy-five thousand?
That was that, uh, that contract agreement that we used to lease. We went to purchasing. And now there's a rental fee until all the equipment comes, and that's tied to that. So you all did a purchase of a million dollars of equipment last year. That has been trickling in. We did not get dumped on us a million dollars of equipment. That's been trickling in. Jimmy's tracking that as, as it flows in. Until all. Uh, yes, sir. There was a, there was a change from a lease program to a purchase, uh, mid-year last year. Everyone's shaking their head except you. So, so part of, part of that is that equipment, uh, came in, and it came in and trickling in. Until it all gets here, we're all, obviously, we have to have equipment. So we're on a lease program for the equipment. Once a newer piece comes, the lease gets reduced. That's part of that. So that number will wind down to zero.
You know, keep, keep that up. The trickle, the trickle down works.
Do you like that?
So nobody sees how much it really is.
Not in all of it.
The code enforcement, uh, this has been, just, I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page. Anyone calls, a supervisor calls, a citizen call, we are going to do our best with code enforcement. Either I appreciate the notification, like we send a team out, we acknowledge it, we have a new database, we're able to, uh, do the enforcement in a timely manner. And I say it in a timely manner based on that chart. That's the problem. And the problem I need to bring back to you all is that we have some policy language tied to the county that we need to, if we want to get more enforcement in a shorter timeframe, we need to clean up our language. Because by, based on how our code is written, you can ride the clock out on a symbol, I didn't cut my grass. Or I built across a, a, a property line. You can ride that clock for thirty days. And there's nothing I can do about it because of the way our language is written. So I need to bring back to you, and I'll work with council, I'll bring back to you where we need to tweak some of our language. Where you see those two green bubbles that are kind of like a shotgun blast there? Those are the areas we can influence the amount of time we give a citizen to correct their faults. And I'm all about compliance. I'm not here to make money off of anyone. We need to get compliance, but we need to get compliance in a reasonable amount of time. And I don't need to give you thirty days to fix the problem. You left your trashcan on the side of the street. That's ridiculous. So, uh, I want to be, everyone, to include our citizens, be aware that there's a very specific timeline that we have to follow. So we're within the law and, uh, all the way to the end where it comes to a, a magistrate decision. But the, we can influence it, and we will influence it, and I'll bring that back to you, just so you're aware.
Thank you.
Uh, the water lines on Sunlight Boulevard, we are continuing. There's a lot of slight hiccup with our county friends when it came to the, uh, the approval of the traffic control measures there. We sorted that out this week, and, uh, we should be getting the drilling done early next week, followed by the asphalting. And then we have the list out for the final, the total, the total project. I'll be bringing back, uh, the final bid to get that entire line replaced. But that's been our hiccup. It's County Roads, we're having to deal with some county issues. Uh, so no changes on that. Very shortly on the cash list, it's in your packet, really just for your situation awareness. District Office is fine. You went down from having thousands of dollars in our kitty every day in a very, you know, friendly environment where it's not a bank vault to, to barely a hundred dollars a day. And that's really spending cash that we have just out of necessity of that. So it's been working very well at the District Office. Uh, we transitioned the recreational facility. It's kind of at the same time. We're officially gonna go in the, uh, October timeframe to a cash list for a certain amount, because I don't need to be charging any fees for a person with a five-dollar, come use the pool for five months. That, that didn't make any sense. So we picked the twenty-five dollar number basically to address those with, uh, buying memberships. Alright, so if you're at that high, that level or higher, you'll, you'll be able, you'll have to use a debit, a credit card, a check. So that's, that's gonna go. No pushback there, no issues there. It, it actually removes a lot of cash from a facility that's not near security. Out on their own somehow here. So that, that makes total sense. The biggest question, concern, comment that we just need feedback from you all on, not now, but in the next thirty, forty days, is our need or necessity to go cashless in our clubhouse and golf course. Had discussions with our team here. All the other places, there's an add-on charge like you would do anywhere. Avon Hard, Sebring, pay your bill, you use a credit card, there's a fee. So that's an, it's an add-on. The clubhouse and golf course, right now, based on how we operate, and this is how the industry operates, that's an embedded cost of doing business. So that fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year in credit card fees, we eat that. We've been eating that. But that's, that's, that's how business does it. You're never gonna get, very rarely are you gonna get a bill, you sit down at the restaurant, oh, there's a credit card fee of ten dollars extra. That ain't gonna go over too well anywhere. So, we are not really concerned there in, in most cases. Uh, we, there's some areas we could go cashless very easily, maybe the beverage cart, maybe the pro shop. Got it. And our team's looking at the, but it's really just a sense, you guys, how, how far you want me to take that with the golf course and programs.
I'll speak up first. I'm totally against specials program and the clubhouse and pro shop, period.
Okay.
A second then.
I've never been to a restaurant that said, no cash.
Okay.
Or a bar that said, no cash. We got enough yet. I, I just cannot see telling the people that. No, period.
Same thing.
Yeah, I told you. I think, and it's, I think that you're gonna.
Why not the pro shop? I understand the restaurant margin easily, but just curious about the pro shop.
Because I don't want, I don't want my husband to know every time I buy it. Just say.
Well, now we do. You didn't put on a record.
Hopefully, he's still at it.
I mean, I can't borrow food. Totally understand you at that.
During the summer, we charge as little as twenty dollars around. A lot of people come in and will just pay cash. And that would be prohibited from doing it. I just think it's, for the clubhouse and restaurant.
Yeah.
Level definition. I'm, I, I also think this, this, uh, the one-point-eight-five or whatever we're charging for credit cards that were in the recreation center and possibly in the club, that should be hidden. That should not be, this is how much it costs, plus we're gonna charge you for a credit card use. We should put that in the cost of, or whatever it is that we're charging.
Yeah, we can definitely look into that. Uh, there may be some concern with doing that. I'm concerned with legality, I'm concerned with that, the assessments and hiding it into an assessment fee, but, but we owe you the right answer.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think, I'm trying to think, anybody with a credit card never says, well, we're charging you an extra two percent because you're using your credit card.
I'm sure. They, they do.
Yeah, you go to the county.
You pay on the county, it says right there, you use credit card, debit card, you will pay more. But I understand where you're coming from.
You go to the restaurant, you're gonna pay more.
County business. Uh, we, we, we'll get you any specifics on that if we can bake in that number.
Yeah, I'd like to either possible.
Uh, so, so consensus then is all we're needing to map how much energy we're gonna put into this. We'll collect some data, but I don't think we're gonna do much with clubhouse and offices. If you guys are comfortable with here and there.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't think you need to collect any data.
There you go. Alright, we're good there.
You got enough on your plate.
There you go. Alright, and, uh, and then I'll end with the, uh, we, we kind of alluded to it across the board. Team has been extremely beating the bushes, trying to do the due diligence for our residents and finding, I'll call low-hanging fruit. That, you know, we, we're all taxpayers, we're all taxpayers. We need to look out for our best interest. And we're finding it. We'll continue to find it. We'll refine it. We're not gonna, to this, we're not gonna need it to the detriment of losing services or quality of services by no means. But there are some areas that, uh, we don't need to do an advertising firm because I got a great person down there that manages our website and can handle it and does it professionally. So I don't need to pay twenty-five hundred dollars a month in summer. I'm not a fan, to Mr. Brooks's point, I am not a fan of contractors unless we need to. And I'll be the first to tell you what we need. So, uh, so we're going across the gamut of stuff. We'll continue to look for those, uh, those cost savings. Because at the end, it's something we can put money back in our pocket or do something with. That money right there, if you add the infomark, it's about over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's two employees. That's a half-mile road. That's paying a, a power bill for six months. I mean, that's, money means something. Even though it's a trickle-down. So we'll continue to find that and to, uh, to the best of our ability, uh, be good stewards of the money entrusted to us. You entrust to us, they entrust to us to do the right thing for the district. That is all I have. So, any questions?
I have a couple. The Tanglewood entrance, I noticed was, uh, being cleared. And I haven't heard anything what's going on here.
A what?
Yes. So a perfect example, uh, does that?
You haul?
No.
No, you haul together and.
Coming right out of Tanglewood, we noticed that they were clearing. Uh, we caught them, our permitting, Glenn had caught them. Uh, we brought them in the office. They paid their fines for clear land clearing. Uh, so we caught them, and they're doing the right thing now. To the south of Tanglewood, there are, these are two developers, uh, somewhat local guys that live around here, but, uh, they want to build, and they are building, a manufactured home sales store. So, you know, you buy bits and pieces for your mobile home, but they wanted to buy.
One of those big yellow.
They wanted to present where you can actually buy new models of manufactured homes to be built, not only in Tanglewood, but anywhere in county. So that's what they're building to the south. County's permitting it. It's a commercial business. They're paying their fees to us, and we're good on with that. But that's what they're building on the south. All they did on the north side is clear it. They are now entering talks with, uh, larger big-box entities, and they're including us now since we grabbed them in the office. I'm talking like a Best Buy, Target, something like that. They're, they're entertaining that for that large open space. Uh, more to follow that. They had nothing firm. They were just wanting to get some land cleared so they can actually present that to potential developers in the future.
Okay, right, just, that's just something we need to know. Just, I think we need to know that. When is the fence going in?
We have a seven-October start date. From the contract. They got pushed. Yes, sir, yeah. Again, we're using an outside contract. He gave us a seven-October start. It'll be done in a week. So that'll take care of the playground.
Okay, uh, and I might have asked, should have asked Dave, but what's going on with Auckland?
With what?
Uh, the, the company that has the launch.
It's going, it's going downhill as far as?
Yeah, as far as the sale of them. I know it was gonna be sold and then backed off and, you know, a lot spit.
Oh, well, they, we have, the, the agreement we have with him is like a forbearance agreement. When they, when we, through the foreclosure process, when they, when we get lost and we turn them over to them for sale. That was talking about, yeah, so that's, they, they're allowed to hold them for a certain amount of time. I think it's up to two years, but then we hold the, the assessments and abeyance for that, that two-year period. And then whenever they sell it to a third party, that's when we collect our money.
Is there sales going on?
Yes.
Okay.
We're getting ice checks from them as they sell.
Okay. They just, you know, we used to hear about it. Now we don't. We don't hear it.
Oh, I can provide you a detailed update of how many lots they sold in the past sixty days. Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all.
I got, I have a couple things. Do you, uh, do we have any update on, uh, lighting? We're gonna try and get some funding for lighting, because I know we have only, we have no monies in the budget to do any additional new light.
We have fifty thousand.
I'm sorry, street light.
We have fifty thousand for this budget year.
That's for regular, that was told, that's for regular maintenance?
No, we put in fifty thousand capital for new lighting.
That's expansion.
Oh, we have fifty thousand? I'm sorry. So I missed the fifty thousand capital? We have any plans on what we're gonna do with it?
We're, we're, the genesis of the prom of Sunlight started in a discussion with Duke Power, bringing them in, having a meeting, laying out a new lighting plan, because when I, when I got in the seat, I was told, there's a lighting plant. There's no lighting plant. I'm just being honest. There's, there's maybe some scraps of paper that say we're doing this, this, and this. Uh, so we're going to re-energize that plan, sit down with Duke Power. They're gonna pay for a large part of it. We're gonna say we have fifty thousand dollars to add to the pot, and then I'll present you where we're going to expand the lighting network.
Okay, 'cause I, I, you know, I took a trial of our quartet a couple days ago, and the homes are really going up quite fast.
Yes, sir.
And there's no lighting whatsoever.
The biggest feedback is the new, new areas are wanting lighting. We advertise we're a streetlight community. And we're, we're lacking on that.
I think, you know, you got San Jacinto, you've got Pebble Beach West, you've got San Bernardino, you've got San Bruno, and now.
Yeah, we have places out there by Forte.
That was the area we were looking at first when Dan and I were talking about this.
Jacinto, Pebble Beach, and San Bruno.
I mean, I'm just saying, since we're reevaluating the budget, maybe we want to put one to fifty thousand dollars in, in the capital this year, if, if it's available.
Yes, I'm, I'm, we'll bring back a new lighting plan reformation, yes.
Okay. Can you give me an update on the painting of the buildings?
We met with the, uh, met with the developer, the contractor, uh, a week ago. Their start date was one October. He said ninety days for completion of eighteen buildings. So, uh, we'll, we start with. So, uh, we'll, we start with the clubhouse, we're going to the district office, and then we start doing this place and the other places.
What color was it in?
We picked that light reddish color with the dark accents.
Don't say what. Do you like?
Yes, yeah. Yeah. Uh, but yeah, we should start seeing paint, uh, on the clubhouse on one October. He's going to do the install of Rock. He has a contractor for Rock, so I will bring back to you the, uh, the, the Rock pillar discussion, because it is an increase, it's gonna be a, a change order, about five thousand dollars to pay for Rock.
Okay. Okay. I read in one of these reports that we're gonna be replacing the bridge, uh, going to the island. Did we, did I know that?
It was in that year budget.
Replacing the bridge?
Well, the entirety of this area back here, uh, based on the recreation plan that was approved years ago. This is just the next step towards it. So we have the funds in the budget.